Day, May 11th. Regular meeting of the Stafford County School Board, we are meeting in our school board chambers. I would like, none of all board members are here in person this evening, so no need to authorize anyone to participate electronically. Madam Clerk, can you poll the board or do roll call for us?
Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Hazard?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Hollerback?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Dr. Warner?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
All right, before we begin, let's rise and we will say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any changes, deletions? Hearing none at this time. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our first proclamation this evening is going to be our Mental Health Awareness Month. And Dr. Chase, would you please read that for us?
Sure. Proclamation to recognize Mental Health Awareness Month in May 2021. Whereas, mental health is a part of overall health, and whereas, mental health sustains an individual's thought processes, relationships, productivity, and ability to adapt to change, and whereas, worldwide, 10% to 20% of children and adolescents experience mental health conditions, but the majority of them do not seek help or receive care, and whereas, half of all mental health conditions start by 14 years of age, and suicide is the third leading cause of death in 15 to 19-year-olds, and whereas, the consequences of not addressing mental health and psychosocial development for children and adolescents extend to adulthood and limit opportunities for leading fulfilling lives, and whereas, early identification and treatment can make a difference in successful management of mental illness and recovery, and whereas, through public education and civic activities, Virginia remains engaged in the promise to address the challenges facing people with mental illness, and whereas, Mental Health Awareness Month is an opportunity to increase public understanding of the importance of mental health and to promote the identification and treatment of mental illness. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the School Board of Stafford County that May 2021 is designated as Mental Health Awareness Month in Stafford County Public Schools.
Thank you, and I'd like to also note, of course, it's nurses' appreciation. There's lots of wonderful things about our health going on in May. I hope everybody will enjoy the outside and work on, hopefully, our mental health with some sunshine and other things. So, thank you. This evening, we have the privilege of having the firsts of our parent advisory committees. Just would like to give an introductory note about our advisory committees. This is a wonderful way for parents and guardians and those interested in the school district to get involved at a level on a topic that you particularly enjoy. Just wanted to talk about next year's advisory committees, so that everybody can put it in their planner. Just for some background, there are seven advisory committees. The CIP, which is the Capital Improvement Program, CTE, Fine and Performing Arts, Gifted, School Health, Special Education, and Technology. Most committees meet once a month. We will be having an orientation meeting for all committees held on Thursday, September 9th. Everybody get it in your calendar, in the school board chambers. And it talks about, that's a great evening to meet with your committees initially and to set goals and things like that. The initial deadline for applications is going to be 4:00 PM on Wednesday, August 18th. If you miss that, that's okay, you can join later, but please jump onboard early. We'd love to get you involved. And then, because we appoint members at our meeting on August 24th. The applications will be found online, or maybe even already are online, at Stafford So, anyway, I just wanted to give that as some introduction, also to thank those who have participated. Tonight, we're having both our Special Education Advisory Committee and our Technology Advisory Committee. I'm going to invite our Special Education Advisory Committee presenter to come on forward or have introductions.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board, Dr. Jones, Dr. Kizner. Just wanted to take a few seconds to acknowledge and recognize our committee members and all of their hard work. Their insight has been invaluable, and I'm looking forward to that continuing into next year. So with that, I would like to introduce Keisha Evans. She was a parent on our committee, and she is going to be sharing CX proposal to you. Keisha Evans, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board, and Dr. Jones. We're very excited to present to you our proposal for additional staffing to help with the social-emotional learning for our students. Our CACT team met six times this year, and our meetings were held both in-person and with a virtual option. We discussed numerous topics to be considered for our presentation to you all. However, we felt that additional staffing to support social-emotional learning was the most appropriate due to the current public health crisis. Luckily, we started social-emotional training and support for our staff and students prior to the pandemic, and has continued into this school year. The Student Services Specialized Instructional Support Personnel, also known as SISP Team, conducted a presentation for us and answered questions that we had about the next steps with supporting the social-emotional growth of our students. We also understand that Dr. Hummer came and provided you with the presentation as well this past fall, as to give you information on where we were with social-emotional learning and training for our students and staff. The benefits of social-emotional learning and support led to connectedness for students to feel as if they belong. Staff should also value the importance of building relationships with their students to help with students knowing they have someone to talk to when going through a crisis or a situation. Unfortunately, in 2019, more than 1 in 3 high school students had experienced persistent feelings of sadness or hopelessness. This is a 40% increase since 2009. Nearly 37% of surveyed high school students reported these feelings. Some groups are more affected than others, especially the LGBTQIA+ and female students. Suicide-related behaviors are also a growing problem for adolescents. In 2019, approximately 1 in 6 youth reported making a suicide plan in the past year. That's a 44% increase since 2009. Again, the increases were different for each group surveyed. Research shows that helping students feel connected decreased these numbers significantly. The most common mental health diagnosis, according to the CDC, are behavioral problems, ADHD, anxiety, and depression. As you can see from the numbers on the right, these conditions impact our students and require additional support in the school setting to help develop their social-emotional well-being when dealing with day-to-day home and school stressors. The statistics from the CDC shows the breakdown of each mental health disorder by age. The committee recommends following up on this data to identify any trends within Stafford County due to the pandemic. Our partner, the Rappahannock Area Community Service Board, provided some eye-opening information to us to present. As you can see from this chart, this shows the number of students ages 18 years and younger who received some variation of social-emotional interventions, from outpatient to case management to placement in a facility through the Independent Assessment Certification and Coordination Team process, which is known as IAACT. Here's a list of our current SISP team staffing to include psychologists, social workers, counselors, diet technicians, and nurses. Our proposal is to have at least one psychologist and one social worker per building. We recommend the Stafford County Public Schools Board regularly review the need for additional social workers and psychologists above the one per building, which will be based on the needs of the students, parents, and other community stakeholders of every building. The committee thanks the Stafford County Public School Board for increasing the number of social workers in the current budget to help get us closer to this proposal. We currently need 15.6 social workers and 14.5 psychologists. We understand the budgetary implications of this proposal, so we have put together a four-year plan to get to that goal. We thank you so much for your time, and please let us know if you have any questions.
Do you have any of your other board members here tonight?
Actually, no.
No? Okay, because I was going to ask them to stand if they were here.
Thank you.
So, thank you for a wonderful presentation. There may be some questions, but I know it's always a little daunting to come up here. It shouldn't be, but thank you all for so much of your great work. Any questions or comments? Ms. Young, start us off.
I feel awkward. I don't know what happened here. Everything is like spread out. Yeah, kind of weird. Thank you so much, Keisha, for coming up and doing the presentation. You said you have a four-year plan. Would you be able to, you don't have to talk about it now, but send that to us at some point in time? I know, but I'm saying the details.
Yes, the details, yes. We would be able to send you guys the details of the plan.
Okay, very good. Yes, Ms. Healy?
I have a question. Is there anything that we can do in addition to addressing the slight social workers and psychologists? Based on these numbers, it looks like it's across the board, but any area that is particularly in need or anything that we as a school system can do to address the issues that these, and I'll call them children, because our students are, you know, primarily under age 18, are facing? These numbers are stunning when you look at this community, and, you know, 1 in 6 is considered suicide and, you know, what everyone's addressing, and I can't imagine that it's not going to be higher because of COVID. But if there isn't, you know, anything right now, that's something I would certainly, you know, ask for the committee to look at, and we don't have to wait until the end of, you know, next year to get it, but it's, you know, what can we do? Because we do have funding available for COVID for, you know, at least the next two years. And if there's something that we can provide, whether it be to, you know, go through the teachers or support staff or some resources at Central Office, I think that would be, you know, that would be really helpful, and because your committee has already studied this issue and you're representative, you know, of the community, the way your appointments are made, I think you would have some good insights for that.
Well, thank you for asking that question, but I think Dr. Hummer here can actually address it more in detail, if you like, if this is the time. If not, he can probably provide more in email or setting up a meeting with you.
Yeah, I wasn't expecting something this evening, but just something that we could consider in terms of allocating resources, or if there's areas of particular need, whether it be at a certain level of schools or particular school areas, you know, that would be really helpful to know, because we've already identified the, you know, the social workers, and we're working on that, and I think your point on psychologists is well-taken, but I know how hard it is to even find psychologists that will work for the, you know, the salary that we offer, you know, as a school system, so we do have a lot on contract. But I'm looking for other things that we can do, you know, to help address this crisis.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely. And I can address that briefly, and if we need to follow up, we can. If you recall the presentation that I gave back in the fall, one of our main emphasis is, this doesn't fall just on one person. It shouldn't just fall on our psychologist or our social workers or our counselors. It's all of us, so it's building the awareness of our staff, building the awareness of our administrators, and the reason we need the staffing is to continuously provide the support and the training, so we can work together on addressing these issues. As we saw in our research, the number-one way to overcome this is making our students feel connected and making sure our students know where to go when they're going through the social-emotional stressors that they're dealing with on the day-to-day. And a lot of times, they don't know where to go to, so we want to make sure our staff has that training and support. So to answer your question, we are continuously working on providing additional training to our staff. We're looking into more supplemental programs such as Panorama, which has numerous layers to it, where we can add to that to provide more resources for our teachers, and that's something that I'm working with Mr. Fulmer on and expanding that. But if there's other things that we can do now, Mrs. Healy, that's something we will definitely reach out and make sure we put into place. So I appreciate that, yeah.
Dr. Warner, first.
First of all, thank you for working on the committee, and thank you for your presentation. You know, I see that, you know, the goal, long-term goal, is one psychologist and one social worker for school, but as you know, recruiting psychologists is very difficult, and there's a huge shortage. You know, I can see the validity of doing this, especially when you look at the data and the statistics, but it's a current problem. Do we have any insights or suggestions on either alternatives or ways to maybe get around some of that or facilitate more psychologists?
Yeah, absolutely. One of the things that we are currently doing, I'm working very closely with Mr. Fulmer and Mr. Burnett in regards to assessing the pay scale of our psychologists to hopefully attract more, but unfortunately, as you mentioned, this is a nationwide issue. So one of the things that we are trying to do is to tap into our universities and getting ahead of that to hopefully provide some more incentives to get more psychologists into this profession. One of the things that we're also emphasizing is the importance of our CISP team, where again, it's not just our psychologists, it's our counselors, our social workers, our staff. So if we're not able to get psychologists, we can definitely tap into other mental health providers in order to get us to our goal. So we want to continue to make sure we're adding psychologists, but if we can't, we can make up for that in other areas. Unfortunately, we contract out for some of our psychologists, which can get a little costly, but we want to hopefully get ahead of that.
Ms. Randall, I think you were next, and then...
I have two. On the one slide you put up of the mental health local data, 18 years and younger, and you have the years FY '19 to FY '21, and I realize we're only about halfway through '21 at this point, but were these numbers all like a January to December, and this 2021 is just what we have currently? Or were all of these numbers that, like a school year, or what was the timeframe? Because I'm just wondering, in some cases, our numbers are lower for '21, but I would expect them to be higher, but maybe because we're at the mid-year and these are full years prior? I'm just curious.
Yeah, that's a great question, Mrs. Randall, and that was a question that I had for my team that got me this information, and when we reached out to the RICS B, they gave us the data to what they had at that current time. And that's why we mentioned, as Keisha mentioned, we're going to continue to assess this, and we want to make sure that if those numbers start to increase at a rapid rate, we're able to assess that and address those issues, because the RICS B works very closely with us, because there's some situations, as mentioned in this chart, that we just don't know about, where parents don't share it with us, so we want to make sure that we build that relationship so they can in order for us to get ahead of it. So this was just a snippet. I think I requested this information last month, so it was up until that point in regards to how they had that data. So we'll continue to assess.
And of course, some with being virtual for so long, data might be a little bit more harder to get.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and the second part is, something you just said a minute ago just made me think of this, when you were talking about, both of you, when you were talking about training for our staff and health professionals, and then you were just mentioning some of the great things about making sure kids know when you're feeling a stressor, you know, where's my helpful people kind of thing. And is there anything other than, say, Panorama, where it's like an introduction done or what have you, where students will be given some sort of a presentation or some sort of an introduction to, you know, these are some things you might be feeling, don't, you know, don't feel like you're extraordinarily, you know, different, that you have feeling something that many of us are, and here's where you need to go. I mean, is there, is there something that's going to be done, just because next year's going to be a different, hopefully all full start, regular, nothing stopping us, let's go, gritting my teeth behind the mask? So I just wanted to know that we have something, you know, that's maybe a little bit more obvious for our students when they come back, because we are outfitting a little bit more in the buildings, but we want them to know, this is where you can go, this is what you can do, that sort of thing. And even like, when Dr. Warner just said, some alternatives, you know, knowing things like, I'm going to be talking far out there for some I know, but like even doing yoga, meditation, tapping, breathing, you know, things like that, where they can be shown it, taught it, you know, practice it or something, you know, as a way to, and I know there's lots of counselors that will help them with things like that, too, but just wondering how that's going to play out for kids.
Yeah, so I'll answer that question with, with yes, it's happening. However, I want it to be happening more often, and I want it to be happening more consistently across the board. I think we have some staff that are comfortable addressing these types of social-emotional supports and providing strategies and leading students to the right resources, but other staff, just because they're not equipped or they're uncomfortable or whatever the reason, they're just not able to do it as other staff are, but we want to make sure that we're able to provide them with that awareness. So as I mentioned with that training, I want to make sure that we continue with that, because part of Panorama and part of our social-emotional awareness training we did back in 2019 was part of that. It's how to talk with your students, how to provide them with avenues, and how to lead them to get the answers they need in order to work through the stressors they're dealing with, but it needs to happen more often, and it needs to happen more frequently. So it is happening to a degree, but we need to increase that degree. Yeah.
Dr. Chase?
So I just want to sort of second, third, what other board members have said and what you said in your presentation, which is the real importance of connectedness, and how do we build more of that? And some of that is something we ought to be able to do without expending huge amounts of money. I mean, it looks to me like we have 136 students per social-emotional staff member, which is a lot, but, I mean, I know, and I've mentioned this before, other school systems have models where they do things like, you have a homeroom teacher, and that homeroom teacher is your homeroom teacher ideally for all four years of high school. And so there's that connectedness and relationship with an adult that gets built, and it's not perfect, because obviously people change jobs and they may not be here for the whole four years, but it really allows a relationship, and it's not really a cost, an additional cost, to arrange something like that. So I don't know to what extent we've explored something along those lines to really try to, you know, I mean, you can train, but if teachers don't actually see students regularly, they may not have that. So just...
I love that idea, and any way that we can increase that awareness and building of relationships, we're all for it. So that's something we could definitely look into. Dr. Chase, thank you.
Ms. Young, I think you said you had another question?
Yeah, I'm just going to speak loud, because my mic is over there. And this is minor, but I was just wondering, I looked at some of the models here, and you have it up to age 17, but I know we have some students in school that are 18. I was wondering if then our numbers are actually even greater than what we have here.
That's this one here. So that data, unfortunately, Mrs. Young, was from the CDC. The local data was the one with the charts that we shared with you. So we do have some connections at the VDH, so I can see if we can get the ages beyond, and that's a really, really good point. I don't know why the CDC stopped there, but we can definitely look into that. I think that's a good point.
Yeah, I'm just saying that our numbers are probably higher, especially with the students in high school between 17 and 18, knowing that they have to leave school, which is the comfort of their home sometimes, that that number could be even higher for those kids.
I think, and just a minor technicality, and maybe I can look into this, I think I just, this is just for children, so they probably call 18 and older is probably the adult, so I could definitely look into that.
Between 17 and 18, that age group, I think it would be interesting to see what that number is.
Sure.
All right, any other comments? I'll have a couple closing ones, I think. First of all, again, thank you so much for coming. This is actually very important data, I think, for our community to know in general. Like, this is the kind of thing I would love to see in, I hate to say, the newspaper, you know, really giving a true picture of where we are. I think echoing again, board members saying, you know, can there be some partnerships in our community to provide classes? I know even Ms. Randall was saying yoga, just other things, seeing how we can partner with them, because I do think during this time, with some of that CARES Act money, poor Mr. Fulmer is probably quaking, goes, they're spending it away in a way, however, but I do believe that this is one of the areas it is very much meant to cover, and some of those partnerships of classes or things like that after school or in the evenings, you know, maybe seeing if there's interest, but there may be some, and I would like our schools to be able to do that for our students, but also our families in general, because I know there's a lot of stress. I know we're seeing it this way, but usually when there's stress in a family, it's not an isolated stress. It's for many family members, I can say, going through that, understand that. So, you know, if there are those kinds of partnership activities and offering their classes or using our school buildings to be able to offer that in partnership with our Social Services Board and stuff, it's just something to, I think we would certainly be amenable. I think it's a wonderful, because like I said, I think this is a snapshot of where people are. I don't think it's just kids. It's been a long, it's been a long year and a half, so, again, thank you so much for coming, appreciate it. Hope you're going to, remember, sign up again.
Can I just make one suggestion?
Yes, ma'am.
Being that you said, reach out to other, you know, partner with other, you know, organizations, you know, I served as a chair for the Department of Parks and Rec, and Susan will tell you, maybe we can reach out to them, and maybe we can partner with the Department of Parks and Rec, and maybe they can help. So, maybe that's a good idea as well, and Pam was on there as well. So, yes, I worked with both Ms. Young and Ms. Randall, so maybe we can partner with them, okay?
Great.
All right, thanks.
The more partnerships we have, because I do think we're in a great community, and I think a lot of times it's, if we can jump in to fill the need, a lot of times people just need to know how they can help. So, thank you again. All right, our next advisory committee is our Technology Advisory Committee. I will recognize Mr. Cook, if he wants to give his either introduction, and again, thank you for coming this evening.
Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Jones, Dr. Kizner, it gives me great pleasure to introduce you to Erin Ewing, a parent and chairwoman of our Technology Advisory Committee.
It's my big outing, sorry. All right, so let me just make sure I got this. All right. So, good evening, everybody. My name is Erin Ewing. I'm the co-chair of the Technology Advisory Committee. This is my third presentation to you guys in this role, and I'm excited to have the opportunity to do so tonight. We didn't get the opportunity to present to you last year, but you all came through for the parents, the kids, and the teachers, and secured the funding for the technology equipment, both hardware and software, that empowered student and staff to adapt and excel. Thank you. Tonight, I'm going to present recommendations with one theme in mind, provide resources for all students at Stafford County Public Schools. All right, I will walk you through each of these four recommendations individually. Overall, our recommendations are to continue doing what we've done over the last year, and to plan to do so in a way that is sustainable year after year. All right, the One-to-One Program provides for online resources to all students in every classroom, even when the classroom is at home or in a parking lot in a car. Early on in this worldwide health crisis, the challenge of equity within our county became front and center, crystal clear. Students needed access to technology for learning, and many families did not have the technology at home to communicate with school and the community. That's not the case now. Students now have the hardware resources to be successful, thanks to the One-to-One Program. Now, as we move from 100% virtual learning through hybrid and eventually back into the school buildings full-time, the use of these devices will change. They become a tool in our toolbox to... They become a tool in our toolbox to support continuous, continuous opportunities to excel. We recommend that the county plan to continue the one-to-one program from this point forward. With this program comes additional student responsibilities. Our recommendation is that students keep the same device from year to year and that they bring it with them to class each day, charged and ready to use. Students are expected to care for their current, their device similarly, sometimes, to the care that they provide to their textbooks. Will there be missteps? Will students come to school with eight percent battery life? Absolutely. But we, parents, teachers and staff, can help them develop the habit of taking care of their devices and ensuring that this new tool is charged, clean and ready for use when needed. Okay, I'm going to begin with one of my favorite success stories, um, one that I don't believe gets enough attention in the county. Last summer, the technology department installed outdoor Wi-Fi, uh, access points in three underserved communities in Stafford. The Cox Cable Wi-Fi has provided good quality internet, uh, service to these communities for almost a year. Essentially, the students open their Chromebook and it works. There's no paperwork, there's no eligibility justification for income levels to, to qualify. Their Chromebook just works. This was a game changer for students in these communities. Our first recommendation here is that this be continued as well as expanded. The second recommendation is for the continued use and provision of mobile Wi-Fi hotspots, or access points known as Kajits, for students who need them because they still exist. Our third recommendation here is that we provide, uh, we continue to provide the content filtering on the student devices. It is, you know, really one less thing for parents and teachers to worry about. Okay, I keep hearing people talking about how we need to get back into school and I have to laugh. Outside of their six-month spring break, the students at Stafford County Public Schools have been in school. Teachers have been teaching, the nutrition team has been feeding the children, and there has been no real time off. Don't get me wrong, school has looked and felt different and kudos to everybody. Um, but it did not stop. The kids have been in school. One reason we've been able to offer continuous learning opportunities was through the use of the Canvas Learning Management System. Canvas enabled the collaboration between students and staff at a level we'd never had before. Is it perfect? No, nothing is. But through continuous professional development for the teachers and expanding the use of Canvas to accentuate and further their lessons learned during the day, we believe this to be worthwhile to continue. One of our parents talked about her second grade student who started the year off reading at below reading level, or below grade level. After a few months of intervention with Lexia, this student is now reading a grade level ahead. We believe access to research-based software combined with our fabulous teachers offers Stafford County public student, uh, public school students the opportunity to excel. Two primary recommendations for you guys to consider. One is to procure the devices during the spring so that we have them for the students at the start of the year. And the other is to focus on the students, not the hardware cycle. What does this mean? We would like to focus the rotation of devices based on student transition phases rather than the published maintenance cycle for the Chromebooks. So you see there, um, if you look at the little sticky note on the screen, uh, K, five and nine are all circled. It is in kindergarten when students are issued their first Chromebook or a device. This one will be a touchscreen device for them to get, you know, the tactile interaction. That student will keep that device through the summer of their fourth grade year. When they come back, fifth grade, they swap it in for their new device. Right? Then when they enter ninth grade, they come back, they swap it in for their new device. When they're entering ninth grade, we're looking at potentially a, a larger device, maybe a fourteen-inch monitor for more interaction, um, and usability with the older students. By focusing on the student, we will leave, we will level out the funding over time. The blue line on this graph shows a leveled budget that gradually increases with student growth. The red line is if we wait until the hardware reaches end of life. We don't want to do that. If we spend a little bit more now to meet the students' needs, we will prevent the larger expense down the road. Thank you for all that you have done over this last year to keep our students learning continuously in a safe environment and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much for, um, a great overview of technology this year. I appreciate it. And, um, let's see, any questions?
Just a quick question.
Ms. Hollerback, start us off.
Thank you very much for that. Um, this is, I don't work with a Chromebook, so I don't know how they work typically. The one that I have here is limited to just opening up my agenda and closing it and going home. So, um, in, in the recommendation, you basically said that they'll get, they'll keep, they'll get their, uh, device and they'll hold on to it for four years. So like with, with my regular laptop, I, you know, periodically Windows has an update and it tells me when I need to update it and all that other stuff. So how are we handling updates, uh, for the, for the younger kids who don't necessarily know how to do those types of, um, upgrades?
Great question. Um, the, the thing we like about the Chromebooks is they automatically update. So if you just turn them on and off or, and log in like you would normally, it'll automatically update in the background.
Oh, good. Great.
It's pretty cool. And then when it restarts or you log back in, it'll be updated. Yep.
Good. So effortless, effortless.
The only drawback to that is seen from my eight-year-old whining that that will close out all of her tabs, right? But when they log back in, they can access things that maybe weren't working as they should be.
Right, gotcha. Thank you.
Dr. Warner, start us off.
Thank you for the presentation and thank you for serving. It's nice to finally see you face to face. Um, I appreciate the effort, um, that the tech committee has done this year. I think that there's been a lot of good information that's come out, especially as we've had to be more reliant on it. Um, I like the idea of focusing on the students and, and, and keying their, um, hardware needs to their academic levels. I think that makes a lot more sense and especially on a monetary basis. Um, do you have any idea what, uh, what hardware would be most appropriate, what technology would be most appropriate as far as computers for the high school students say that we're maybe not using now?
So Jay, you might as well just stay up here. I know that Jay has this all planned out.
Yeah, so, um, the couple of school board meetings ago, when you guys approved the Chromebook purchase, um, we did the touch for kindergarten and for, um, for the high school students, a fourteen-inch screen with a, like a higher resolution screen, so they can do the spreadsheets and the presentations and all the creative things. Now, other levels do that, too, but the high schools really, really take advantage of that.
Thank you.
There were some higher level, um, machines that are purchased. I can't remember for which programs, but...
Yeah, not, not, not with the Chromebooks.
All right.
Yeah. So I, I had a couple of questions. One, I mean, I, I, um, I know, for example, Chromebooks don't run Microsoft products. So if you have students taking CTE, needing to learn Microsoft Word or Excel or, or trying to get those kinds of things, um, I know some school divisions have had to pay for virtual licenses or virtual desktops in order to make those work. So, um, would we just have that, those things happening in the school rather than the students having a device or what, what would we do in that case?
So in the past year, this past, and currently, we're using AutoCAD running on a virtual desktop system and it just works on their Chromebook, on their laptop. Office 365 is also available on the Chromebook. Um, in, in the coming year, we're gonna, it's going to scale back a little bit because the students will actually be in their classroom with the original computers that were set up for that. But, um, we are going to pilot some ideas with, with that size Chromebook in the virtual desktop. And in that way, they can actually use AutoCAD or, or Digital Arts or Adobe or whatever, anywhere they happen to be. So even at home.
And do you know offhand what those licenses cost?
Um, we're going to bring that to you guys.
Okay. Because the number I was quoted from somewhere else was really quite high. So I was kind of like, that's not, that's not just getting a, a laptop. Um, and then I guess I'm wondering, it used to be the, the sort of, um, Chromebooks were kind of, what's the word I'm looking for, um, were maintained or, or the license was made, you know, that, that they, they were supported, that's the word I'm looking for, supported for six years. So if we have a Chromebook that a student is turning in in fifth grade and so they're now going to have a Chromebook for just three years and then we're going to get them something new for ninth grade, are we going to...
So i- in the chart, um, you'll, you have, you, you have the presentation. So, um, and they get it in fifth grade, at the beginning of fifth grade, for four years. There, unfortunately thirteen doesn't divide by a good, you know, a good amount. But, so they'll have it for fix, fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth and then, yeah. So it's really four years in the middle schools. Um, but I'll say, uh, we could wait until the very end and, um, when it goes out of support and the security and all that stuff stops working. But usually around year four, the batteries start getting kind of weak. So, um, you really need to have them plugged in a lot of times. So we don't want to wait until they're starting to die and the students complaining, right? So...
Gotcha. I mean, I'm just thinking, I mean, I, I don't have a, a problem with it if we have just a huge open bank account full of money to pay for it, but I'm a little worried that we don't have that and I'm a little concerned that, that when the federal money dries up, um, without support from, from the local level, we could find ourselves having, again, tough decisions to make. So I, I, I absolutely understand the aspiration and, and hope that we'll be able to, to meet it.
About half of the Chromebook purchases can be covered by state funds that we've had for a long time. So, um, if we level it out like we're, like we're, um, recommending, then, um, it'll be a, a known amount each year instead of, you know, the six million dollar thing coming in a few years. We don't want that to happen. So...
All right. Any other questions? Ms. Young, go ahead.
Hello.
Hello.
Looks like I'm on every committee. So yeah, very good work. Thank you so much for being there as a parent and, um, always, um, you've been, um, just headstrong and getting things done there. So I appreciate you. I appreciate you working with Jay and the team. So, thank you. Um, one of the questions I had, and I, you know, they asked some of the questions that I had in mind, but, um, what I saw when I was helping some of the schools hand out computers this year, uh, last year, ooh, COVID year, um, was that some students, and it went smoothly at most of the schools, some students had, um, they had certain things that they needed to do with the computer, so they've gotten a, a different one. And, um, they knew what they needed, so the school kind of provided them, I mean, I don't know if it was a, wasn't a Dell. It was a different, I think it was...
The laptops you're talking about had fourteen-inch screens.
Yeah.
That's why we're switching to fourteen-inch screens.
Yeah, and so they were kind of special. They knew what they needed and so they, they got those. They didn't get the Chrome. So that's why I just wanted to mention that.
We were scrambling last summer.
I got my work on. Um, and then for twenty-nine, you know, twenty-eight plus, uh, students, yeah, you would like to provide them at the time that they move from one school to the other, but, uh, being in technology, it doesn't work like that all the time. Jay didn't tell you anything, but he knows. They, they will die regardless if you plug them in or not. So do you have a plan, um, for that?
Y- yes, ma'am. We have, um, our, all of our techs are certified on repair. Um, we're pulling in, uh, we have an intern that just started today. Steven was an intern for us. He could put together a Chromebook pretty dang fast. It's a, they, we have a, a shop, the shop set up to really to help with the Chromebook repairs. And we have spares that students don't have any downtime. So when they bring in the device, we give them a different one and then we, we send it off to the shop to get it repaired.
Thank you. You know, I'm big on plans, right, Jay? I'm always like, what is the plan?
Yeah, me too.
I know you're in the shop. Ms. Young is going to ask me about what the plan is. Let me better have it ready.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Randall?
Um, so Jay, in the last slide where, um, they're showing us, recommend, the recommendation of the forecast of purchasing, is this also a plan that you have as well? I mean, obviously you have to bring it toward, to us.
We had some, uh, we had a lot of enthusiastic discussion in the tech about this kind of stuff and we, and we settled here.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's more than settled. We all worked together to come up with this in the kindergarten, fifth grade, ninth grade.
So as we see you come to us with purchase proposals, it's following this long-range plan?
Yes, ma'am.
For, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have to say that there's a lot of very, um, parents who have strong backgrounds in tech and IT that, that really do help support this committee and, and, and help forming, foment all these, um, ideas. So I, I think that, you know, it's really been impressive to see where they come from and what knowledge they bring to the table.
Thank you so much.
So I guess, ooh.
In that same vein, thanks again for a great overview is, I'm sure, um, I'm sure Mr. Fulmer's probably hiding in the back. He, he's probably seen this, this plan and I wouldn't be me if I didn't say, of course, I think we're going to have a lot more students next year, that we are going to need to equip. How are we planning, um, for that growth?
Plan assumes a three percent growth year over year, every year.
All right.
Well, hopefully it won't be more than that, but that's, it assumes that from the beginning.
I think this year we're going to have a lot of kindergarten computers and, and first grade, but we will see. But, okay, I just wondered what the growth fact, because staying ahead is, is part of the, the challenge and we always want a student to, um, have that device when they arrive, um, which I know this year will be August. How do you feel, um, on our ordering for this year? Because I'm sure it's not like we're not the only school district out looking for computers.
Yeah, we, we got ahead of the curve for sure. Um, but, well, you know, we were, we were down to the wire last summer, so hopefully, you know, we just wait on the shipping. Hopefully it gets here. But we did start off early, which thanks to you guys, so...
That's always going to be the big one because, like I said, it's not like we're not in competition with anybody else looking for
That's right.
Um, devices. So again, thank you so much. Anybody from your committee here?
I believe it's just me. I, I would like to go off script though, real quick, and just, um, give a little shout out to my daughter's third-grade teacher, Ms. Sadler at Rocky Run. I have listened, so I work from home about ninety-five percent of the time, right? And I have listened to, um, her third-grade class from start to finish and it's, it's amazing what these teachers have been able to do. I don't know if any of you have ever wa- worked as part of like IT help desk or had to deal with IT help desk, but take it and scale it down to an eight-year-old and then expand it by like thirteen, fifteen kids and you might have a semblance of what they're going through. And they are even and calm and patient and the kids are navigating. These kids are going to be so far ahead of even where most of us are. But in, in the next couple of years, it's amazing. I just, thank you very much, Ms. Sadler. You have made our year.
And you said third grade at Rocky Run, okay.
Third grade.
Dr. Kizner and Dr. Jones, I want you to note, a little shout out for one of our teachers. Dr. Kizner and Dr. Jones, I want you to note, a little shout out for one of our teachers, I always love hearing those. And thanks for sharing that, because it's great to hear the stories, cuz I can tell you as school board members, we hear a lot of the bad.
Right.
And I appreciate you for, um, bringing a great story on many levels about the increased in the reading level and for your students, so.
Absolutely.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
And remember, sign up again. I feel like the sign up lady.
All right, our next item is going to be our staff presentations. I know this is being watched by many. Plan for the reopening of Stafford County Public Schools for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two academic school year. I believe the boss wanted to, um, do a quick introduction. Dr. Kizner, if you're still on, I think you'd said you wanted to give a couple remarks. Um, can you hear me?
Yeah, so first of all, um, I wanna make sure I thank, uh, the district instructional team. I know they've been working on this literally for months, not days, not weeks, for months. Um, prioritizing the instructional needs of our students, making sure our younger students are not being compromised, uh, by having lost instructional time due to transportation. I remind the school board that we have a little bit over sixteen thousand students right now back in our classrooms, but we still have close to twelve thousand students still learning virtually. So our objective next year is to increase significantly the number of children that will come back into our schools. Five days a week, you're gonna see in the plan that we extend the school day, um, pretty much to the normal school day hours. Please recognize that the state is not doing waivers like they did this year. So, um, the, for example, the Monday asynchronous day, where this year was able to count towards instructional time. Next year, not that we're having this, but if, if we were having it, it would not, um. I also will talk about it during my school board com- uh, my superintendent comments, but today I attended two meetings. One with the state health department, and they had the state medical director and the state epidemiologist. And then I attended a meeting with George and Collette, with the local health department. Um, and we had, again, the, uh, health department, uh, medical staff, along with the local epidemiologists. And I bring that up is because, um, I don't wanna lose sight, although things are obviously getting better. Um, we still will be addressing, uh, the COVID nineteen epidemic next year. For example, uh, contact tracing, um, uh, the, uh, the ability to quarantine, and to make sure that we're social distancing, um, a- as, uh, much as possible. So I, I don't wanna lose sight. Um, people are excited, I, I'm excited that things are getting better, but we still have that challenge ahead of us. And then there's another challenge, which I'm sure, uh, Barry spoke to you guys when he met with you, and I do thank every school board member for spending time to meet with the instructional team. Our transportation, uh, needs are significant, we're s- we're still short drivers. I think as of today, we might be short still thirty drivers. Um, Barry could update that number if he'd like. Um, so not only do we have the challenge of getting our children into school, but we have the challenge of making sure we have drivers to drive our students to school. And the schedule that, uh, the instructional team put together, along with transportation, uh, maximizes, uh, the ability to be successful in both instruction and getting kids to school. So I, uh, appreciate Dr. Jones and his team for the presentation that you're about to hear. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Jones, now you get to take it away.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the committee of the school board and the community. I know you've been waiting on, uh, this plan. Obviously, our team really wanted to focus on getting to the fourth quarter, uh, which is why you're just receiving the plan tonight, but as Dr. Kizner mentioned, uh, our goal is really to focus on all children. So this is a children-centered plan. Um, we are in the middle of COVID, we certainly wanna focus on equity, um, and we wanna create the optimal learning environment. So first thing I'll share with you is, as Dr. Kizner implied, uh, we've been on a journey. So we've gotten lots of feedback. Um, I think the team would suggest that we, it seems like we're always meeting. It seems like we're meeting more now that we have the opportunity to do it virtually. So we've gotten feedback from lots of folks, um, in terms of developing this plan. Uh, this year has given us an opportunity to really analyze our virtual program offerings as a division, so you'll hear more about that. And as Dr. Kizner mentioned, we're still following mitigation strategies. And I think we're getting more guidance from the state and federal and local folks than we ever wanted, and that will, that will continue. Uh, we do have some legislation that's driving our decision-making this year. You're very familiar with Senate Bill thirteen oh three, which requires the school board to offer in-person instruction to each student enrolled in this local school division. Um, it requires that we, that we meet the minimum required hours, instructional hours, and as Dr. Kizner mentioned in his opening comments, asynchronous learning does not count in terms of meeting those required minimum hours. So that is a change from this year. Uh, but also, uh, the, the bill also focuses on our early learners, our early scholars, and ensures that we provide, uh, equitable opportunities for those students. And then that last bullet, we're still awaiting specific guidance from the VDOE regarding, uh, virtual learning. Just so you'll know, the bill states we may offer virtual, it does not require virtual learning. But previously, the VDOE said school divisions had to offer virtual learning, but it says may in this particular bill. Again, this is just a slide that highlights all the guidance that we're receiving from the CDC, the Virginia Department of Health, the governor's office, as well as the VDOE. Uh, there's really two main goals that, if you remember July twenty-eighth, when Dr. Kizner presented the plan for this year, uh, the two goals were really, uh, safety, and also, to the extent that we could, optimizing virtual and in-person learning. Uh, the goal for this year coming up is really to focus on in-person learning for as many students as possible. So that slide just highlights that particular goal. Now here's where I wanna be really honest and open with the public. When we first built this presentation, we actually had student and family needs first and staff needs first. But as Dr. Kizner mentioned, transportation is a driving factor in our, in our plan. Um, so we, as a, as a public entity, we obviously want to be operationally efficient to the degree that we can be, while also providing the optimal opportunity for students to learn. So, uh, we wanna ma- maximize our transportation infrastructure, um, that drives this schedule. We certainly want to, you know, you heard to- earlier tonight about mental health. So we know one of the things that we can do as a school division is to provide a consistent schedule for families. Uh, people have changed fatigue, I'm sure, for this year. So this plan offers a consistent schedule that really optimizes, uh, face-to-face learning for next year. And we've heard quite a bit, particularly from secondary teachers, this year on the power of collaboration. So our secondary teachers through the a- the asynchronous Mondays, as well as the delayed start time at the high school, have had more opportunity to plan collaboratively. So this plan includes, uh, that opportunity for teachers to plan collaboratively going forward. Um, this slide only underscores that the majority of our students that use our transportation are, are elementary students. So pre-COVID, about eighty-five percent of our students, uh, relied on transportation, uh, to get to school every day. So this plan was built with the fact that about twelve thousand of our students are elementary students, and we wanna make sure that, uh, from a foundational perspective, in terms of building those literacy and numeracy skills that students are gonna need later in life, that we don't wanna disrupt that. So the plan includes that focus on building foundational skills for students. This, again, just talks a little bit the, the, about the value of in-person learning, you know, it's optimal modality. We can, we're, we are much better equipped to accelerate, intervene, provide academic support, and ensure social emotional support for students when they're in person. And we all want our students in this community to have the comprehensive school experience. So by having students in school, we can provide that comprehensive school experience, which includes curricular and co-curricular, as well as extracurricular opp- opportunities. We wanna ensure transportation is, um, consistent, particularly for our elementary students. We know that not only this year, but last year, we've had significant learning loss in those foundational skills. So how do we make up for that? Get our media students in school early, and make sure that that's consistent for those students. Um, we also know that our secondary students have struggled some by not having that connectedness by being in person, so the plan certainly provides that opportunity. Previously, we had more disruption with our elementary schedule in the, in the past. This plan tries to address that by ensuring that we have a consistent schedule at the elementary level. And I've already mentioned the collaboration needs for our, our staff. So here's the meat of the presentation. This is the, the plan for next year. Um, and I'm gonna, I know Barry will probably speak to this more later, but just to give you an example, um, when I talk about operational efficiency, we need two hundred and nineteen buses to conduct the two elementary shifts, and about a hundred and ninety-three bus drivers. So as Barry looked at, uh, the transportation challenge and looked at how we could be efficient, in order to really be efficient a- as a system, this, this, this schedule is ideal for our transportation infrastructure. And then this system, this plan also includes, again, the, the, it's really less of a, uh, change for the, for the middle school, and a more significant change for, for the high school, that provides that collaboration time in the morning for high school teachers. As far as the virtual learning, we really don't want our, our earliest learners, our preschool students, we don't want them in virtual. We know that's not an optimal learning environment for them. And we know at the elementary level, for those students, we wanna, we wanna limit the opportunity for students to be enrolled virtually. So at this point, and again, understand we're still in the planning phase, we're looking at a term commitment. You can, you commit to virtual for a term. If you're struggling virtually, and you'll see in, in later slides, if a student's struggling virtually, for those students that, that will be in virtual, there's an opportunity to come in person. But we do wanna, we don't wanna make that an attractive option necessarily, cuz we know it's not ideal. At the middle and high school level, it's more appropriate for students to take some virtual courses. So you're very familiar with Virtual Virginia, they've been around for a long time, for about a decade, um, in, in, in the state of Virginia. And we've already been engaged, our students have already been enrolled in Virtual Virginia classes. But again, the offerings in those programs will be limited. For example, students will have an opportunity for more core courses in the, at the, uh, secondary level, not so many of the electives and CTE courses, which this slide highlights. So you'll see for elementary, our, our provider will be K-12. Um, they're a well-known provider for virtual, uh, programs across the state. Some of the teachers will be affiliated with, with Stafford County, others may not. Um, the challenge for parents who enroll their students in virtual at the elementary level is that they'll have more of a coaching role, um, versus, you know, relying on, and then, not to say parents aren't the first teachers, but they aren't necessarily trained teachers, so. They, they, they will have more of a, an active role if they're working with their younger students in the elementary level. At the secondary level, again, Virtual Virginia, you're very familiar with that, but you'll note that the specialty programs, fine and performing arts, CTE will not be available virtually. And that last note, um, if students are struggling virtually, that's like, just like we've done this year, if students are struggling virtually, we certainly will transition those students into the, into the school. And then we also, in the, looking at our virtual options, we certainly wanna make sure that legally, uh, what we offered is appropriate. So you'll see sort of our fine print there that we have the right to limit eligibility required criteria for students to enroll in virtual. Again, the idea being getting as many in-person students, as many students in school in person as possible. So finally, this is our timeline, we're presenting this initial presentation tonight. Our next step is to build out the registration forms for, for Virtual Virginia and, like, the K-12, um, elementary program. Uh, certainly wanna try to get the initial registration, so we can plan accordingly in terms of the number of students that are in virtual and the number that are in person. We, we wanna provide opportunities for parents to fully understand what the options are with K-12 and Virtual Virginia. Um, by the end of June, we wanna have our transportation, uh, lined up in terms of the number of folks that need it. We wanna finalize our bus routing in, in July, and we wanna make our bus routes available to families in about a week before school starts. So this slide simply indicates that the new normal means we've learned some things this year. We learned some things about the value of in-person, we've learned some things about social emotional learning and how we can support that. And but we also learned that we can leverage virtual learning where it's appropriate, but focus on, um, in-person learning, you know, when necessary. So at this point, I know I went through that fairly quickly, um, entire team of us are available to, to answer your questions.
All right. What I thought I would do is kinda, we'll give a, get, go a pass, uh, pass through. Dr. Chase, you wanna start us, and then I'll just go back and forth, sorry.
So, um, when we're using K-12 Inc. and we're using, um, Virtual Virginia, uh, will the state give us credit for that student being enrolled in our school system? So, you know, we have our average daily membership, so if somebody's doing K-12 Inc., or if somebody's doing a hundred percent Virtual Virginia, will we get the, the average daily membership funds for that student?
Yes. Uh, both Virtual Virginia and K-12 have their own Virginia virtual schools. In this case, they're, they're connected through virtual program, so they're the vendor, but they're connected to Stafford County Public School.
Okay. Can I ask more, or should I just ask that one?
Sure, let's go up to three.
Okay, and, and I think that's all I've got, so that's good. So, uh, another question, what happens if, um, uh, let's say we're asking, um, parents to, to make some kind of commitment? Um, I think we have it by May twenty-first, and then something happens, and we miraculously find that we have herd immunity by August ninth, and so that parent changes their mind. Um, how, how, I mean, are, are we really expecting parents to commit in May?
That's a tough question in terms of what we expect parents to do, but let me answer the easy part of the question. The easy part of the question is that the bill requires that if a student wants in-person, we provide it.
Okay.
So the parent needs to transition, we, we were obligated to do that.
Okay, so could we then find ourselves in a situation where we have hired enough in-classroom teachers and have enough students, and all of the sudden, um, I mean, I guess we'll know when these registration forms. I just don't want us to be in a situation where suddenly we don't have, you know, we have very full classrooms because somebody changed their mind. But hopefully people, most of the people I'm talking to, they don't care what the schedule is, they just want their kids, five days a week, six hours a day in the classroom, so, um, yeah, so that, that's.
So Dr. Chase, one of the challenges has been, this year has been the back and forth.
Right.
So we, we do, do need families to commit to a term. Uh, but again, if a student is not being successful virtually, then we are certainly gonna, uh, make a decision to get that student in school.
And then I just wanted to throw out there, we may find, uh, which would be a wonderful thing, is if there's a seven-thirty start, that some parents will drop their kids themselves at school because they're on their way to work, and they can drop their elementary school at ki- at school, a student at school on their way to work, which might alleviate some of the transportation problems. But, um, thank you very much.
Well, that's, that consistent schedule we're trying to provide to parents, so families can plan accordingly.
Ms. Healy, do you wanna jump in?
I think you were starting over there.
I was, I'm just, I'm bouncing around, keeping everybody on their toes, sorry.
No, 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 I just, call consistency.
I was putting my, my ones in order, I'm.
Don't worry.
I'll keep it to three.
We can do another pass.
I'm gonna start out with this June twenty-eighth, opt-in to transportation. What does that mean?
I'm gonna ask Barry to come in and address that, if he doesn't mind doing so.
Barry, you might as well just come up and take one of those seats up there.
I mean, generally, we see opt-out. This, this opt-in, I'm, I'm, I wanna hear what it is.
It, it's basically the same thing. You're either gonna opt-in or opt-out for the transportation, just like we have done this year. So we can plan better for the, for the coming year, because, and what we have run into this year is we've had parents opt-in, and the children never show up on the bus. They've just saved a seat on the bus, just in case. And in those cases, we have been moving some of those students out, so we can let other students who need the bus move in, so. And the opt-in piece, well, obviously with the shortage we're facing with, with drivers, that'll be a part of it. But if we get opened up to being able to put more students on the bus, the, that would pull some of that away from it. But, and even in a non-COVID year, non-pandemic, it's important that we know who's gonna be riding the buses.
Right, but this, I, I'm, I'm concerned about an opt-in, particularly so early in the year, be- with the school starting in August, and they'd have to opt-in by June, because number one, there might be a number of students who aren't even in the area that we won't know about. But it's always hard to, to reach all the families, and I would be hesitant to plan bus routes based on people who have opted in when there may be a number of other people who didn't know about it, or didn't respond, or for whatever reason. I think it's more reasonable, um, to, to ask. I think it's more reasonable to, to ask people to opt-out. And that way, we will be planning for everyone except those who say they're gonna provide transportation.
Right. And really, we can't push that back any further because the routing process, while you would like to think you just plug the names in and all the sudden routes appear, it's not that easy. It, it's a time-consuming process.
And I appreciate, I know how much you go through every year.
Yeah. Well, we got wonderful coordinators. You met them earlier.
But this opting in versus opting out, I, I, I just personally think that an opt-out is going to give us a more accurate count of who may be riding those buses. And I think if we, if we go with an opt-in and someone just missed the memo or didn't have a chance to respond and come August, they're saying, oh, my gosh, there's no way to get my child to school. What are we gonna do? We're gonna have to rearrange to pick them up. So, you know, that, that would just be my preference. I think it would be a, a kinder way to handle it with respect to our families with all the pressures on the families and everything that's going on. I would, I would not want to think that someone missed the point that they had to opt-in to transportation because it's our responsibility to provide transportation. Then we should be looking for people who choose not to take, you know, that benefit of, of providing a bus. So would that be an issue if we changed this to, I'm not suggesting it's something to consider, but if we changed it to an opt-in versus an opt-out?
Barry, if I could just maybe answer a little bit. Just so you know, that the building principals constantly follow up with their school community to make sure parents are aware of the timelines. I do want to go back to what Barry said. We ran into a, a problem this year where many parents, just to be honest, reserved a spot on the bus but never had their children on the bus. So in many ways, this is family-friendly because those families that actually need transportation will be able to make sure we have the routes for them and we will try again to have some level of social distancing. We're just concerned that it's very easy for parents to say, I will take transportation, and then choose not to. So it's just another way of looking at it. So I just want to go back to what Barry said, that our experience this year was that we had many parents indicate, yes, I want buses, transportation, and then never put their kid on the bus. And that caused problems for families that did want transportation. We had to make some other arrangements. Thank you.
Again, next year is going to be very different because we're going to be five days a week. And hopefully, we'll be back to more pre-COVID circumstances with the buses. But again, it would certainly be my preference that we have an opt-out for transportation because otherwise, I would be very concerned with the fact that this date is after school gets out. We don't know families' plans, where they're gonna be. We've got, you know, a very high ESL population. I'm assuming we're gonna have communication, but with 40-plus languages in the school, it's gonna be hard to assume that this message gets, you know, carried to everyone. So that, that's my question. I'll hold my other questions I have for another round because I had some follow-up questions on this, this transportation. And can we, can we have that addressed at some point, Ms. Hazard?
I'm making.
Not tonight, but.
Right. I'm making a list of sort of suggestions.
I would like to have a follow-up on that. And I'm speaking as a representative of, of, of families in the community that I think it would be a better service for them to have the option to opt-out rather than to opt-in. And, and also, if we are gonna keep this opt-in requirement, I want to know, you can send this in a memo, but it should be published, what will happen if someone who did not opt-in comes in and when we start school and say, my child needs transportation? So you don't have to respond to that right now, but I think that's gonna have to be important to know what that response will be.
Ms. Healy, I assure you, no child is gonna be left on the street. If a kid needs to be on a bus, they'll be on a bus. Plus, we will have families move in after June and July and August all year long. So we're constantly adjusting. I, I, again, our experience this year was that we reserved a lot of seats and nobody showed up. So this is just another approach. We talked to other school systems and this is a method they've been using and it seemed to be more effective than what we used.
All right. Dr. Warner?
Thank you. I was just curious, how have the requirements for social distancing on the buses changed? And how many students can we get on the buses now?
At this point, we're putting two per seat, which is giving us about 52 students per bus, depending on the seating configuration in the bus. Face mask, windows cracked, roof hatch is open.
Okay.
We hope vaccinations will change some of that, but we just don't know yet.
Well, I'm just wondering more if, how it will affect our bus driver shortage if we can get more students on the bus and if there's any maybe incentives that we can offer, at least in the short term, for the next year or two, to try to increase the number of bus drivers that we have.
I know we're already offering some incentives, but I'll let Barry, Barry speak to it.
Yes, there, there are incentives now. The problem we're facing at this point is the fact that DMV has, here's a, for instance, I set up an appointment in April to go to DMV. I'm gonna go in in June, June, late June, June 24th. And we're doing the third-party testing, the learners permit testing, but it's still a slow process getting things through and getting people tested. I was sharing with somebody earlier today, typically at this time of year, we've trained between 20 and 30 completely trained people. And this year, the last time I looked at the list, a week or two ago, we've had four. So, and in the meantime, we've lost 30. So it's, it's a little bit discouraging. But hopefully, DMVs will open up as the state continues to open.
The DMV has never been known for their speed. Thank you. Ms. Hollerback?
So thanks to staff for spending some time with me yesterday to kind of flesh through all this stuff. And I've had a, had some time to go through some emails, ones that I've told you about, to better understand what some of the concerns are. I, I understand that transportation is pretty much driving the schedule. My personal opinion, and I felt this way two years ago when we first started having this conversation about moving the high school students to a later start date. My personal opinion is we're supposed to be molding these young adults for adulthood, which means getting up early and either going to school or going, driving to work, driving up north or whatever. Any of these kids that are joining the military after high school are gonna be getting up at a dark 30, right? So to me, allowing them to sleep in a little bit later when they're already staying up late, I feel like it's counterproductive. But it is, but, but it, but it is what it is. I guess my question is, is some of the northern jurisdictions have already moved their, their seniors and their, their secondary classes to a later schedule. Have we talked to them? Have we seen a, a, an improvement in grades? Have we seen an improvement in performance and, and testing and things like that? And did we see a, a decline in how maybe our elementary kids were doing because they had to get up so early? So I just want to know, have we spoken to anybody, Fairfax, Loudoun, whoever did that switch?
Yeah. We talked to a number of school divisions. And, and to be honest with you, research suggests that a later start time is better for older students. Again, that's what research says. Abama County has about an 8:55 start, Chesapeake 8:50, Chesterfield 8:30, Henleyco 9 o'clock, Loudoun 9:15. Matter of fact, the Loudoun schedule is 9:15 to 4:03. So there, there, depending on where you go in the state, there are lots of school divisions that have different start times, but many in our region have later start times.
I would be interested in, in seeing if there were, was a difference after they made the switch to, you know, was there an improvement in, in their grades and in their, their testing and whatnot? So at some, at some point, if, even just a snapshot would be appreciated. And the jurisdictions that did that switch, that put the elementary school kids at, at the earlier hour, did they do anything to help the parents that were, were going, driving up north or going elsewhere to work and then not having their high school kid home to be able to get those elementary school kids off the bus? Did they do anything? Is there YMCA or any help to the community for those folks?
Well, as far as I know, what's happened in those communities is the childcare providers have adapted to the schedule for families to accommodate families.
Okay. Have we considered doing anything with the, with the Y to offer some assistance to those families that are dropping their kids off and then driving up north and don't have, and their high school kids are still in, in the later afternoon schedule?
Well, I know what we've done this year. I don't know that we've spoken with the childcare facilities about next year since we're just presenting the plan tonight. But we, we know what we've done this year to try to address that. So we work very closely with the Y this year to try to accommodate childcare needs for our staff.
Yeah. Chris, I believe the plan, the, the Y will be open till 6:30. And Chris former could address that, but the Y will be operating at all the elementary schools.
Okay. Getting back real quick, and this will be my last one. For those, several of folks here had brought up the, the, if somebody decides that they're gonna do virtual and circumstances change, or if they decide that they're gonna come here, do, are we going to have like a petition process? Like, you know, when, when people don't like the answer that they get from, you know, being able to move to another school, they're, they bring it to the board and then the board, you know, kind of looks at it and says, well, you know, we can't, we support the decision that was made or we don't. Are we going to have some kind of procedure in place for those families who can basically say, I'm in a hardship here and I really need to be, you know?
I think the best answer to that question is that's what we've done this year. So we, we know that, we, principals have monitored students that are virtual and have monitored students that are in-person. So, so we have a duty as a staff, if we know a student's struggling, to reach out to the family and ensure that we are able to work with the family to get that student to school. That's what we've done all this year. That's what we intend to do next year on a case-by-case basis.
That's great because circumstances happen.
Yes.
Right? And we don't want to make somebody, force somebody to do something if their circumstances have changed and they can't accommodate, so.
If we've learned nothing else this year, we've learned flexibility.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
And Ms. Hollerback, I do want to indicate that the law that Stan showed you, school systems must provide the parent the option. If they choose, if they want to go from virtual to in-person learning, it's not negotiable. We, only thing that we could do is do it at the semester break, but we, we cannot deny them that option.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Randall, go ahead, if you don't mind.
Okay. I, I've shared this earlier and I'm just gonna say it because I'm here, is that I'm kind of in the same boat as Ms. Hollerback in that I feel the elementary, I can totally understand going first. I can see, I mean, from my own child's kind of elementary school experience, waiting for buses to come, he's there every day at 8:45. Buses don't arrive till 9:30. They go and they get breakfast. They're back in the room. It's a disruption. So a full hour of his day is just gone because he's waiting for other kids to arrive. And I do agree, you know, with the slide and the technical information that the kids need for skills and the date, you know, there are certain dates. And it's not, you know, at the age of nine. It could be, you know, your child could need this skill introduced at nine, someone else's kid could use it at seven, someone else's kid could use it at nine and a half. I get all of those things and for that, I'm understanding of the elementary. The part that I'm so, and Mrs. Young articu, has articulated this, I know several meetings where she has said, you know, are we collecting data that we received this year to go forth and make decisions for the next year? And, you know, I know Dr. Kizner, even prior to me coming on, had talked and said, it's for another conversation and changing the order of the schools. And this was a solution for transportation in COVID, to do it this way this year. And, but my thing is wondering now, elementary, I'm completely educated, feel good about. What I'm not clear and feeling good about is changing the order of high school and middle school. Like, to me, it just sort of denotes like what Mrs. Young is saying. What data did we have that says, that's a problem, let's switch them again? And that's to me, still, I mean, I understand when Dr. Nichols was talking about PLCs and, and all, I understand all those things, but I just, for the numbers, sheer numbers of high school kids who have some sort, it is larger than, I would guess, even somewhat, because they're somewhat driving it on their own, whether they're driving or working out or something. You know, jobs, workouts, clubs, activities, fine, fine and performing arts, childcare, all of these things that are just such huge drivers. And running it later and later, to me, you know, I'm not really interested in a kid that has to drive home every night at dark because they participate in an activity. And what is really, I mean, I'm, I've been a sports mom, so I can specifically speak on the sports level, not a, a fine and performing arts mom. It's just not where my kids went, although it could happen. And it's the whole thing of even the travel sports. I mean, these kids are, when I say travel, they go to Prince William, they go to Fredericksburg or even here in Stafford. And that is making it difficult for them to participate or they won't participate in the high schools. And it's part of building a high school community is all, not just the academic, but all of the parts. And one of the things that we talked about, Ms. Hazard, was even how much more we want to try to make sure we pull kids in, like you were even using the word connectedness, to bring these kids connected. But when you run things so late, I just feel like you're cutting a little bit of that connective opportunity out. And so to me, I, I, I'm struggling with that. But the, the other part though, that I would like to know is, what are we gonna do about absent students, absent teachers? Or like in this year, you know, a parent would say, hey, we're heading to Mexico for two weeks. My kid's coming out of the, the in-person and going virtual. I know we have the OWL technology, but concurrent teaching is not sustainable. I understand the academic pieces in which we've talked about OWLs being very helpful. But I'm just saying, what are we gonna do? Who's considered absent? If a teacher is not physically present in this building, is he or she absent? Student physically not in the building, are they absent? Like, and what are we doing?
Well, I think this plan eliminates some of that, to be quite honest with you, because we're limiting the virtual. One of the things that's happened with virtual is students have been able, have been able to disconnect. So by limiting the virtual options, we, and having students in person, that addresses a lot of the attendance issues and the challenges that we faced this year. As far as the concurrent teaching, we've heard very clearly from our staff that concurrent teaching is exhausting. So we want to minimize that. So this plan, this plan includes an effort to try to minimize, concurrent teaching would be for a student that's quarantined perhaps, or a student that has a short-term medical issue and can't come in school. But, but overall, we want to reduce the amount of concurrent teaching that we're providing to our, to our families.
Don't they have HomeBound though, too?
Yeah, we do have HomeBound. I'll, I'll ask Dr. Hummer to speak to that. That, that's a little different from concurrent teaching.
Okay. But what about like for teachers and, you know, if a teacher's sick or in what have, or whatever is going on?
That's really no different than what we're doing this year for, for teachers.
Are they absent and then we put a monitor in the room? Or is that, but they are still expected to be on a screen? Or are they just literally absent? They have a substitute in the room?
We would have a substitute for, if a teacher's legitimately absent, just like they're legitimately absent. This year, we provide a substitute.
Okay.
Did you want to address the?
Ms. Hammer, come on, come on up real quick.
I'm, I'm just curious, what would be the, is there a defining difference between those that would define, come in as a concurrent student versus those that come in as a HomeBound student or?
Correct, correct. So students would qualify for HomeBound if they need to be absent for more than 10 days.
Okay.
So they would need to get information from their doctor, from their primary care doctor, and then they would go through a HomeBound process. We really haven't nailed down if we're gonna concurrently tap that student into the classroom or if it's gonna be more. We really haven't nailed down if we're going to concurrently tap that student into the classroom or if it's going to be more of a one-on-one type, virtual type service for that student. We're still working through those details, but essentially the Homebound process is not changing. That is a process that has been established by the state and we've adopted that here in Stafford County. So we're still working through those details.
I think you need to indicate, Dr. Hummer, that Homebound, I think maxes out at 10 hours a week. So it's.
Well, yeah, it does look a little different. So Dr. Kizner is correct. So high school, it would be 10 hours a week. Middle school is eight hours a week. Elementary school is five hours per week. So it doesn't equate to the services as a student would say if they're out in quarantine and they're only accessing on a short amount of time. They would be accessing the classroom six hours a day. Whereas Homebound is only a short period of time because it's a temporary service due to a medical condition why the student cannot come into school. So we're going to have to reformat what that looks like for the students, but the hours will not increase for those students.
Okay.
And Ms. Randall, regarding, regarding attendance, let me just, let me take this opportunity to really thank the board. Those are additional social workers.
Yeah.
In terms of the family engagement piece. That enables us to provide more resources in terms of dealing with students that are absent from school. So. So that, that, that one investment will have a huge impact on our ability to support families who are, who are truant.
So then, if you have, you were just saying teachers think that OW, the concurrent teaching with OW and what have you is exhausting. And I, I know I've been in classrooms and I'm, I, I just struggle when I see the classroom teacher having to stay on the TV or the computer, and I know, you know, Dr. Chase has his experience this year too, to watch for chat, you know, especially if they're asking questions and what have you, and they've got this chat thing going. Meanwhile, I've seen kids in the classroom with their hand up for quite a while because they're answering into a chat, following a chat, keeping up with the chat. Oh, excuse me, yes. And so just even like if, if there's going to be a scenario where there's going to be a long-term concurrent situation to being, allowing that teacher to have some other assistants in the room to help with the chat so, you know, teaching can occur.
And again, this plan wants, this plan is intended to really minimize the degree. Concurrent will be minimized and short-term only.
Okay. Ms. Young?
Thank you all so much for the work that y'all have been putting in this past summer. And I know it's exhausting, but that's what y'all get paid for. The big bucks for it. Yeah. You know, I always talk about a plan. And so I, I just wanted to make sure that I've always wanted all the elementary students in middle school and high school come later, but definitely elementary. And so I'm thankful that we're, we're making that happen. And that we're looking more at the younger ones and concentrating on them first in the morning to make sure that they get in school early and then get them out. So work around getting daycare and those individuals involved to make sure that they're, they get that information earlier than later, to make sure that they could address the needs of the parents also. I also am concerned about vaccinations and making sure that if parents and kids are not vaccinated, that the fact that we're putting more students on the bus, that they continue to wear their mask because I heard someone said, we're going to go back to pre-COVID status. No, we're not. Unless we meet herd immunity. And the way how we're going, we may not for a while. So this, this, this is going to be here for a minute. We have to consider that. I know a lot of parents are, are ready, you know, to, to have the life back that we had before. It's going to be a minute. We all need to work together. And in working together, we're going to make sure that the kids are, are safe in school. So I just need to make sure that we have a plan. That if something, that we do have a outbreak or something that we could take care of that right away and inform the parents and stuff. This bill, Senate Bill 1303 is saying that, you know, requires each school board to offer in-person instruction to each enrolled. So I was thinking, if that's the case, that every child should be able to have an open seat in the school, does that also mean that the child should have a seat on the bus?
I think, I think you know the answer to that question.
Yeah. So, so it's a a seat for everyone first. And then letting us know if they're not going to use the seat as, as soon as possible. Trying to reach the parent as soon as possible to make sure that, you know, we could continue with that space. Along the same lines, you said that we had 198 bus drivers for the, for the elementary groups, right?
193.
Hundred and, hundred.
Well, right currently, we have 183.
Okay, so I'm off what, three?
10.
Like, what do you want? My math is off, right? Okay. So, so that's what you need to run that morning?
Yes, well, with the.
Come on up, Barry.
With the split schedule there, the tiered schedule, we will have enough drivers to make that happen. Even with, even with diminished numbers, it's making more efficient use of the resources we have.
Barry, look, you know, I'll have to pull back your retirement. You want me to tell you why? I have a problem with, we're only, we only passed four this summer and we need, we, we have 30 under books. And if you're telling, and if you're telling me we have 109, 80, whatever, to run those two schedules and if some, some of them are out, what are we, what are we going to do? Like, do we have a backup plan?
Well, the backup plan at this point is to, and believe it or not, we've been having to do it this year. We use office staff to drive the buses and just do the best we can. We haven't left a route uncovered this year. So. And that's why we've looked at the schedule that we have now to make sure that we're not leaving routes uncovered. And the driver situation will get better. Pre-COVID, we were 214 and I was so excited.
See, Barry, this is why you have to stay. Because you, you make me calm, okay? I'm calm. I think everything's going to be okay. Because guess what? Barry's going to drive every single bus if they didn't show up. The same thing, teachers, I didn't leave you all out. So with, we, if we have problems with not having the teachers, and I think Ms. Randall addressed that a little bit, asked the question about if a teacher is not in the classroom and so you have substitute and we have that on, that's timely and.
Yeah, that's really no different than how we manage it now.
Okay. And, and that's, that's all I have. I, I just want things to, things to work.
And again, just an opportunity to thank the board again for, you know, and this budget that you adopted, you included tuition reimbursement. Those are the kinds of things.
Yeah.
That will mitigate the, the absence of teachers.
Yeah. And in closing, I'm concerned about our students being in school. I want to make sure that when they are in school, because of the long hours, depending on which students we're talking about, that we have a little bit of a grab and go for them, a little apple, a little carrot, something for their long days, because if some of the students are doing sports right after and they're in school, because I'm, I'm concerned about the school system. That's why we're elected to talk about the school system. I understand parents after, you know, kids work and that sort of stuff, but the kids that are, have extracurricular activities right after school, I just want to make sure that they have something because they're going to be long days and we just need to take care of.
So far, the USDA has provided great flexibility to our trial and education staff. So we anticipate we'll be able to provide that, continue that opportunity going into next year.
And then to make sure whatever decision we make as a, as a board, that the public is aware. You know, time, give them enough time to get things taken care of. Right?
All right. I'll do mine, then we'll go to round two if there are more questions. So I'm trying to summarize more what others have said. What I was hearing, I think Ms. Randall say is she had confusion about, and this is probably going to be for Barry, why it makes sense to put the high school last. I think that's the question I was hearing and you know, I, I know you've routed it all out, but just, I think that's the question because we tried it this year, you know, with something different. And if you can just clarify on that, how about that?
The, putting them last and I've, well, we've discussed this with each of you. When you put them last, the high schools have the most activities, the most traveling. And another piece that I didn't even mention is the CTE travel, which we call the annex travel. Where in the past, and you know, we can go to the past here. In the past, those were run in, at the high school, in middle of the middle school run. So we were having to figure out middle schools with the high school CTE travel buses. And by putting the high schools last, we're dedicated to them totally. As far as the CTE runs, annexes, and then any of the activity runs at the end of the day, whether, whatever sport it may be or group it may be, whether fine arts, fine and performing arts.
And in that same vein, with regard, we've talked a lot about after-school activities. We do run activity buses. I'm sure you probably have some idea how many. You may have told me. I have no idea. Again, with the hope that we will be able to either offer additional connection activities and stuff. Will this be able to help with that by having the high school last? I'm just curi-, I mean, I'm just.
It should be able to help with that.
Okay. I mean, you know, change is, is, is change. I'm just trying to see, are we going to be able to meet additional needs with those resources? And those buses, you know, to meet other needs. Because not every student right now is connected into a sporting or after-school activity. And let, if we can begin to offer more of those, we may need to offer additional activity buses. Or that would be, my hope would be able to support those with drivers, right, driving buses. Don't move. Let's see. Bus driver incentives, testing. I will be speaking with Dr. Kizner and Ms. Young and maybe we'll fire up some legislative calls. We tried this earlier this year, but somehow they forgot about that request of saying, let's prioritize the CDL license not to drive for Amazon. Sorry, guys, to drive for a school bus. That we would like to be able to prioritize that and that somebody can edict down that that would be required.
If I may, because I know this is going long, but if I may, something that would happen, that would help every school division in this state is if our DOE would allow the, the classroom part of the pupil transportation curriculum to be online. And that is something that I have asked for, for numerous years, and I finally stopped.
Oh, no, let's not stop now. This may be your year.
Listen, this works in Oklahoma. They do it in Florida, West Virginia, and there's no reason it can't work in Virginia.
Mr., Dr. Kizner, would you, because I don't want to certainly order anything from staff, but if we could get that information from Mr. Suddeth to you and to Dr. Jones, I think we could maybe fire up some interest in that particular because every school district needs that assistance.
And what happens, and I'm, I'm going to step down here. What happens is to come into training, people have to quit other jobs. And then they come to training and have to do six weeks of training. And yes, we pay them, but it's, it's at a minimum wage and they could keep their job, do this on their own time, and then come to us and say, look, I have a certificate from such and such training school. I'm ready to learn behind the wheel bus driving. So just.
So you might as well just get prepared to write that email so we can see if maybe this is the year, not the year that we wanted you to leave and get this that you've been asking for. But that would be a great legacy, I'm sure, to other school divisions. This would be the year to try. So I think this would be a great opportunity for us to work and partner with our legislative and, and others on that. And again, don't go, the communication plan, going to what Ms. Healy has said about the opt-in and the opt-out. I, I do believe there is at least some concern on the board, making sure that every parent knows that there is transportation provided, I believe by law in Virginia, that we have to provide that. How can we communicate to parents? I, like I said on the call when we talked, don't hog the seat if you're not going to use it. I know.
And the best, the best thing that has worked for us this year has been the communication from the schools. They do a wonderful job communicating with their parents. And I think if, if we work through the chiefs and through their principals and their schools, just to ensure that there has been outreach to every student in the building.
I would like to suggest, and I'm sure Mr. Fulmer's waiting for, he knew there was going to be something. If the schools need additional support, if they don't have 20, sorry, 12-month admin staff to be able to help accomplish that over the summer. Mr. Fulmer, would we be able to find hopefully some additional funding if that is a need of our elementary schools? Because the more accurate we can have that information and the earliest, as well as with our kindergarten students, knowing how many are coming, which I think is going to be this many. If we need that additional support, either hourly or whatever, I would just suggest more probably for the fab. Sorry, Dr. Warner, didn't mean to step on that. But I think that that would be something I'd like us to make sure, because the easiest way that transportation runs is if we know who's coming. And that can be a challenge, as we know, in any year. And this year, maybe more so as we have new families coming, how quickly they get connected. We hope they don't wake up and say, oh, my child should be there in September and already the school bus is running down the street. So it's sort of that communication plan. Those were some of my comments. I'm sure there was a different one. Dr. Chase, I think, round two.
I'm just going to, two things. I'm just going to float an idea which may just get shot down, which is fine. That happens sometimes. Which is if we did opt out, as, as Ms. Healy is suggesting, could we inform parents that if their child doesn't ride the bus for two weeks, that then they'd be contacted to see if indeed they're going to ride the bus? I mean.
And that, that's pretty much the protocol we're following right now.
Great. I mean, just, just, you know, because if, if you're really not riding the bus, then that, that would make some sense. And then the, this is not for you. This is another question, which is, last year, when this all sort of hit, one of the things we had in place, and I can't remember the exact specifics of it, was that if a staff member had to quarantine, that we did not require them to use their leave during that quarantine. And I wonder if there's going to be any change to that policy, given that, that staff has been given the opportunity to be vaccinated. If you're vaccinated, do you have to quarantine? And I don't know how that works. So just a, a question about that.
I'm going to phone a friend on that one. Georgie, you want to address that?
Dr. Jones?
Go ahead, call it.
Hi. As far as quarantine after vaccination is concerned, you have to be at least two weeks past the dose, the second dose of your vaccine, if it's a two-dose vaccine series or the Johnson and Johnson, two weeks after that dose, to be considered fully vaccinated. If you are exposed, you need to monitor for symptoms after the exposure if you're fully vaccinated, but you do not necessarily have to quarantine unless you present with symptoms. And then you need to be seen by your healthcare provider and isolate and tested for COVID.
And, and so are we continuing this policy? I mean, I, I can't remember whether it was just one quarantine period was covered or if you were exposed multiple times in a year. Are we covering that? I'm just, I just want to know what, what we're doing.
I would say at this point, we have not come to a resolution on that question. I think it's a, it's an important question to answer. And especially as you described, people had an option to get the vaccination if you choose not to. You know, I don't want to provide an answer because we, I would need to talk to Patrick more and come out with a well-thought recommendation to the school board.
That's fine. I just, just was curious. I don't, didn't know whether we were still doing that, what we, what the plan is, all of that. So I'll, I'll wait to hear. Thanks.
Ms. Healy?
I'm going to get to my, my second question because my first question was, turned out to be multi-part. And this has to do with the change in the middle and the high school start times. I've received. I've received, um, you know, a number of calls and emails from parents, particularly regarding the high school hours here, expressing concerns about the impact on the family, on the students, and, and, you know, other school board members have addressed, you know, these, um, in part. Students that have jobs after school, and whether they use that for spending money for themselves, or whether they're actually helping to support their families. And concern about late practices, you know, how, how late the, they're gonna go, if they're gonna be, you know, out after dark. Um, there, there's a lot of difference that two hours makes in terms of when the students are gonna actually finish their day. It's not just the school day. And when, you know, I received my briefing earlier this evening, thank you. Um, you know, I asked about the, the academic basis for these changes. And I'm, I'm not addressing the elementary because as Ms. Neely pointed out, you know, there was a mid-year review, although I would expect something beyond that, you know, in terms of an evaluation. But, but I really haven't heard, other than professional development for the high school teachers is more available when the classes start late. I haven't heard of any academic basis for this, you know, later start, particularly flip-flopping the middle and the high school times. I mean, I, I, I heard about the buses, and, and I understand that. But buses are always been a challenge. They always will be a challenge, you know, until we have, which I, I think is never gonna happen, and a, a excess supply of bus drivers, and, you know, more than adequate buses available. It, it, it's gonna be a challenge. But to me, it's not acceptable to base a decision that is gonna have such an impact on the community on air convenience in providing transportation. I mean, it's our responsibility, and we've met that responsibility before, and I expect we will meet it in the future. But I'm, I'm looking for some evaluation of the, you know, the impact of the change in the hours during this year, particularly for the middle and high school. And the basis for, once again, changing it, if there is an academic basis for, for changing those hours next year. So that's one thing I'm looking for. And the second, you know, I wanna know, you know, what communication, what input we receive from the community? You know, the parents, particularly, you know, with respect to this change. Uh, we used to have all kinds of surveys that we do. Um, the school board, you know, sometimes has public hearings when there's going to be a significant change. And, and I'm not aware of anything that's been done in that regard. So I would like to get that information. And I know this is not coming to the board now, you know, for a vote. Um, it's, it's a presentation. But as a board member, I feel that the board does have some, um, control. Um, and, and certainly should exercise, um, you know, some oversight over changes like this that affect, you know, everyone in our, in our school system. So if we, if we don't have anything, you know, available now, you know, my question is, you know, when can we get that information? Because I'm, I'm sure hoping that this decision was made on, on, you know, academic basis, and not just the fact that it's easier to transport students with this changed schedule.
No, I think it's a combination of things. And I, and again, part of that is the value of giving staff the opportunity to collaborate. Um, we have conducted town halls at every level, middle, high school, middle. I'll, I'll invite, uh, Dr. Nichols and Dr. Greger if they wanna come forward. But we're happy to bring additional information to the board to, to explain what we think the, the academic value is. This was largely driven by transportation, uh, as well as billing schedules that are best for students. And we know that research says that a later start time for high school students is appropriate. But we're, we're happy to bring additional information. You're welcome.
Uh, Dr. Warner? Ms. Hollerback? Ms. Randall?
Um, I just have a couple. Um, I'm still not convinced on the high school thing. Um, but when you said elementary, um, they are committing for a term. In your presentation, you wrote a year-long commitment. But term, to me, says a certain grading period. So I'm just trying to clarify, is it as presented? That is, that if you commit to K-12, barring no challenges with your child, family, what have you, that's what you're committing to, is a year, or is it a term?
It's a term. So, Ms. Randall, just again, being completely honest with you, Dr. Kizner and I were involved in a conversation with the state superintendent today.
Okay.
Specifically related to Senate Bill thirteen, thirteen oh three.
Sure.
And what we learned in that is that if a family requests in person, we provide it.
Okay.
So initially, as we developed in the presentation, we did not have that direct guidance from the VDL.
Okay.
We do have now that direct guidance from the VDL.
And that, that's for elementary, middle, and high?
That's for any student.
Okay.
So, so the term language, it was year-long, we changed it to term.
Okay, okay. That's, I wanted to check on for that. And then when you wrote, um, May ten through fourteenth, build-out registration form, build-out how? Like, are they going, is it every parent who wants virtual contacts their school? Or are schools contacting parents and saying, hey, what do you want? Uh, what's that build-out registration, what is that?
It's very similar to the process we used this year when we were getting input from parents. Rebecca Tally and her team would develop the, the interface for folks to be able to respond to the plans for next year. So it's, it's almost aligned with exactly what we've done.
So there's a survey, parents should be expecting some sort of a communication, saying, hey, what do you want?
And we've done, typically done that at baschool. So it's been a school level.
Sure, sure. Okay. But I just didn't know, I was assuming that in, from my meeting, that the parents, if they were like, I want virtual, it was their responsibility to contact the school.
No.
It's not?
No, we, we will reach out to parents like we have all this year to, to inform them of the plan and give them an opportunity to respond.
Okay. And then, um, when you were speaking of activity bus, there's a difference in, um, for the, for the high schools, where, uh, like a band practice will be two and a half hours, or another practice will be two hours, or something like that. But a child who may need, um, a club, or might only need an hour, or who might need, after-school tutoring, might need an hour. So what are we talking about for times or thought processes towards activity buses, or are we not even there yet? And that's fine, too.
Yeah, I would say we're not even there yet. It's gonna take communication between the schools and the transportation department.
Ms. Young?
Thank you all for doing such a great work with this, um, design. Um, what do you need from us?
Great question, Ms. Young. Well, I, I would, I would suggest, I think Dr. Kizner, certainly will invite him to make comments. But one of the things that's happened this year is, uh, the board, the board has done a couple of things. They've, they've, they've allowed us to lead and to, to develop the plans, and you've supported that. You've expected that, we communicate that with you, and then you provided the resources for us to execute the plan. That has worked very well. We think we've had a very successful year because of that. So we would ask that you continue to do that.
My only comment is that to, to the public to understand that we are still in COVID, and that we have to do what we need to do to get most of the kids in school, uh, the young ones as early as possible. Um, and so we just need to make sure that we do that safely, effectively, and with the I to make sure that it's about instruction. It's about the kids and the school at this point in time.
Thank you.
All right, um, final things. Ms. Young has asked, what do you need from the board? I think the most important thing we can also be saying is what do we need from families? We need them to be engaged in this process. We need them to know, and all of you want to drive a bus, okay? Please, everybody who wants to drive a bus, please put, come forward and run forward. But advertising, what are our needs? The needs are, the earlier we know the information, the better we can plan for your student, their class, and their, their classroom, and our staffing, so that we don't have to have major changes. How we can begin to get that out? Look, there's lots of clever people. You don't wanna see my picture of like a, um, a hog, of don't hog the seat. But I mean, really, I mean, I really think we have to begin to get as much of that information out as soon as possible. When will the schools be notified of which elementary shift they would be on?
So the elementary shifts are identical to where they are right now.
Okay.
Barry can give you more detail if you need that. But the shifts, in terms of, is exactly as it is now.
Okay. I didn't know if any, there were any shifts based on, you know, lessons learned, or anything. Okay. So that will not, um, be a change. It sounds like there may also be, um, uh, meetings either at the schools for their communication plans. Um, I think one thing, they have to be consistent, but we also give our, you know, principals, they know their, um, community the best. But I really believe we have to have a full court, you know, press on the communication.
Yeah, we know families engaged at the school level. So we will continue that.
And then finally, is there anything else from parents that we need? This is the opportunity to ask the, the many PTO presidents here. We, we love this question. What do we need, what else do we need from parents to make this work?
I don't know, Dr. Kizner's still on, he may wanna address that. Not to pass the buck.
Well, one thing I learned from this year, um, we pivoted a lot from July twenty-eighth to May eleventh. We made a lot of changes. And I recognize we're getting a handful of emails. I recognize there are people who are not gonna be satisfied with change. I would also ask you to remember that we have close to thirty thousand students, and we got, you know, four thousand employees. Um, I think what parents have accepted this year, they trust us. If we journey back to August, journey back to September, October, to January, to February, to where we are today, uh, a lot of shared sacrifice, a lot of trust, a lot of understanding. And we are at a really, really great place on May eleventh, and we'll be on a great place when we open in August. I would ask the school board respectfully, this is your administration. Their motivation is simply to put something the most efficiently and effectively to meet the needs of all our students. And we are not breaking ground by being the last high school, the, the only school system. Loudoun County is, which is the third-largest high, uh, school system in Virginia, and I can name so many others, but that's not important. Everybody has to look in their community. Our plan is not to take anything away from students, but to be much more efficient. Many high schools have after, after-school clubs, sports, um, club nights, uh, club sports, and they, and they finish their school day around the time we're starting. So again, we're not the first one pioneering this. Um, but what we're saying is, in order to make sure that we could ensure that students are gonna have the instructional day that they need, that this is a transportation system aligned with the instructional system that best meets the needs of all our students. And I would just ask respectfully, if we don't support this plan, um, you know, you say to have data and facts, you know, we are doing that. We spend a lot of time talking to other school systems, looking at other school systems, um, and, I think, three of you were at the meeting on Monday, and one thing you heard from a hundred and thirteen employees, teachers, principals, central office, that this is, change is safe, and we have to make changes based on the new, the new things that are, are facing us. And this is a change, we're not saying this is a permanent change. Uh, Ms. Young is correct. Uh, COVID is not finished. And this is a change just for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, building off what we learned in the twenty, twenty-one school year. And next year, although we've had a study, a transportation study, which I would like to remind us, but we'll go back to that in the spring of twenty-two. Um, and we have put together a group of parents and staff members. Barry and Chris led that effort. Um, again, we know their recommendations. Um, so we have actually done a lot to reach out to the community. Um, uh, so I would just ask you respectfully to appreciate the hard work and the well-thought-out plan of our administrators working with the building level. Um, nothing is perfect. We've been saying that from the beginning. There's no perfect schedule, there's no perfect plan. Um, but come August, we think this is the plan where we'll have the least disruption and the maximum, and the maximum amount of instruction, and also address, which is a real issue in Stafford. We cannot deny it, uh, the transportation challenges that we have every year. But this year, when we open up two bus times for elementary, it becomes somewhat more compacted. So that's what we would ask the school board, is to say, we may not love all of this plan, but we understand the plan, and we're willing to support it. Um, and if we need to make adjustments like we did all year long, we will do it. But I think what people are seeking is consistency and not, and, and lack of disruption. So it's a long answer, but, um, I, I just really, really do greatly value my instructional leadership team and transportation and everybody that worked on this, literally for months. Not days, not weeks, but for months. Thank you.
Perhaps I would suggest to the board that, um, and to Dr. Kizner, something we can think about is some kind of quarterly updates, you know, just on this change. Cause as, um, the board will move into, um, the following year and making decisions on, potentially, hopefully COVID will be in the rearview mirror at some point, um, that, um, there will be data and the ability for, um, even additional public input. But may perhaps some kind of quarterly, or some, you know, um, you know, maybe, let's see, October, you know, just something, you know, through there so that there can be some kind of update, would be a, um, suggestion I would have. All right. Any other comments at this point? All right, hearing none. Let's move on to, sorry, citizen comment. So I'm gonna give that invitation. Three minutes are allotted to each speaker or group. Speakers are encouraged to provide a copy of the comments to the board clerk. Speakers shall identify themselves by name and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. The chair reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to predetermine maximum amount of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment, which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm, shall be ruled out of order by the chair. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Public School Policy eleven thirteen, called public complaints. At this time, I don't have anybody prior signed up, however, at the invitation. If you would like to speak, feel free to come on down. If there are more than a few people, just if you'll begin to line up so you can come in, um, one after another. Sir, come on forward. Do you? Oh, and then there'll be little red lights there. Um, green will get you started. Yellow is one minute remaining, and red, I'll give you about five seconds to wrap up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, my name's Jeffrey Crowdowitz. I'm a parent of a high schooler here in Stafford. Uh, I'm here specifically to comment about this new radical shift in the hours for the high schoolers, and what I feel is a disastrous plan. I wanna start by commending the comments of board members, Healy, Hollerback, and Randall in their questioning of the plan. And that I feel, you know, Dr. Kizner says that we're not all gonna love it. Well, I wanna be clear, I hate the plan. And the reason I hate it is for several reasons, some of which were voiced, uh, touched upon by board members, Randall, Hollerback, and Healy. Uh, everything from the fact that this plan, moving the high schoolers to so late in the day, is going to inhibit peo-, uh, high schoolers from getting, uh, jobs if they want it. Uh, it's going to inhibit them- It's going to inhibit them in being able to watch younger siblings who come home and that working parents, uh, fall on. Indeed, this plan places the largest burden on lower income and working families in Stafford by depriving them of possible childcare that would normally be there under the old rotation schedule. Now, the scheduling things around transportation, as Ms. Healy commented on, you know, that's just placing the burden. It's, it's prioritizing something that shouldn't be. It's a typical bureaucratic example of the tail wagging the dog. Now, what was also once spoken is that I'm sure Dr. Kizner has elementary teachers and staff all over the county rejoicing because they're happy as can be about their earlier work schedule. But I'm sure the high school teachers are going to have difficulty. And what I'd like to say, because I know I'm on limited time here to wrap up, Dr. Kizner and the bureaucracy will make the largest part of their staff, the elementary teachers and staff, happy, but they're going to make parents unhappy. And the parents are going to hold the members of this board responsible if they're not happy. And I can verify there has been no seeking of alerting high school parents of the situation or seeking their guidance on this. And I'll wrap it up. I know my time's up, but ultimately, it's up to the board to insist that that feedback is obtained before this radical revision of time assault. And if they're unhappy, it will be the board members that are held responsible.
Thank you. Oh, I forgot about the sign-in list. It's been so long. So is there anybody else who wishes to speak this evening? All right, hearing nobody rushing forward, I will close public comment. We will, um, move on to our board committee reports or our standing committees. Do we have any reports this evening? Dr. Warner, start us off.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Finance and Budget Committee meeting met on, uh, May 3rd. Several items were discussed and supporting documents were sent to you. Ms. E did provide you with all the documents that were sent to the FAB. One item that was put off until the June meeting is the Professional Development for Dual Enrollment. This was requested by Ms. Hollerback. There wasn't sufficient time for staff to determine exactly what was needed or what those costs might be associated, so that will be, um, brought up at the next FAB meeting. The goal is that we can certify more teachers to provide these dual enrollment classes. Mr. Burnett updated us on the wellness strategies. I want to give a shout out to all of our wellness ambassadors who have been working to try to improve and boost morale at our schools. They've worked on some creative initiatives. About half of the budget has been allocated this year. The ambassadors have implemented walking programs, book of the month clubs, virtual art projects led by, um, the art teachers at their schools, and, uh, school-wide step challenges, um, to improve morale and, and deal with the stresses associated with our Covid year. And I want to give a, I want to thank them, and I think this is something that definitely will be, um, continuing in the future. We received, um, an update on the CIP from the county. High School 6 remains targeted for an August 25th open date. However, the county has cut the budget by $25 million. Elementary School 18 has been pushed out an additional four years over the school board request to 2030. The middle school capacity has been extended out another year to 2030, while renovations to Drew Middle School were extended five years beyond the school board request to 2031. Given that Drew is currently at 102% capacity and those renovations are, are seriously needed, um, the school board's going to have to make some decisions on how to proceed. The Fine Arts Center for North Stafford High School remains in the county CIP as requested. High School Number 7 and Elementary School Number 19 were added to the CIP with a date to be determined. Early childhood special education capacity has been pushed out for six years beyond the school board request, 2032. It's difficult for us to anticipate what our, um, classroom needs are going to be for that, but 2032 seems an excessive amount of time to wait for these additional classrooms. We received a project update on, um, North Stafford High School. We've been working, Mr. Anderson provided us with updates. The renovations on the exterior envelope are proceeding. They did have to order additional materials. Some of the metal panels, they ran out of, and those are progressing. I think it's only the back walls that remain to be completed, but everything seems to be on wrapping up. Ferry Farm has been an ongoing concern. Um, Covid and materials delays and other issues have, have come up. Um, Mr. Anderson informed us that a new, uh, construction superintendent has been assigned to this project. They anticipate that the basement section should be substantially completed by June 4th, um, and the addition, um, with the music and art rooms are targeted for July completion. Our goal, the goal is to have access to these areas well in advance of the 21, 22 school year, and we will have to continue to monitor the progress of those projects. Mr. Fulmer presented data showing the state and local contributions to our per pupil expenditures. This year, the county contribution dropped below 40% of our budget request. The percent of our budget derived from local funds has been declining since a high of 45% in 2011 to 39% today. The composite index is calculated by the state and covers 65% of our salary costs for SOQs. To fully fund the raises and the staffing above those SOQs and the enhancements that we've implemented to bring our service sector scale and our teacher scales more in align with, um, our, our competitors to the north, um, we have to come up with an additional 5.3 million, which is achieved through either discretionary state funding or the local contribution. But this just highlights how important the, uh, local contribution is to helping us remain competitive and to meet those, um, salary obligations. The next meeting for the, uh, FAB is June 7th, and there were several things added to the agenda tonight. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right, hearing none. We'll move on to board member comments. All right, I'll take volunteers. Who wants to start us off?
Madam Chairman, I'm going to pass in the interest of time this evening, so.
All right. Ms. Randall?
I would like to, um, thank, uh, Dr. Warner for touring Ferry Farm with me and, and getting this moved to a FAB conversation because it is a little bit of, it has been a big struggle, um, to get that project, and I know Covid is a huge part of it. Materials, getting materials is a huge part of it, but it definitely is a concern for me, um, and I've shared this, uh, numerous times, sort of quietly through the year, but, but I'm not trying to be a pain. But I also want to thank, um, Dr. Chase and Ms. Young for signing up to go and see and tour for themselves and, you know, I, I just appreciate the experience of other board members to, and I know the staff there does too. They don't want to be forgotten either for the situations they've been in. Um, it's kind of sad when a hallway has been complete since December and the punch list as of May isn't even done. So yeah, I'm, I'm really happy to have some, um, support on, on this matter as it is, it's been a concern of mine for years. And, uh, other than that, I have nothing else to say. Thank you.
Ms. Young?
Oh, Ms. Young?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. You're not allowed, but you just did. Poor chair, just benched. I was kidding. The only thing I have to say is that, um, I just wanted to let, um, the staff know how we're appreciated being in the, um, the, uh, district leadership, uh, team meeting yesterday and, uh, with, uh, two other board members, Dr. Warner and, um, Susan. So, you know, they had to read the book, The Infinite Game by Simon Sinek, and so, um, it was interesting to see how they were collaborating and coming up with, uh, you just knew, um, relationships and how to work together. And I thought it was very important, uh, even during Covid, that they had all these meetings from November, uh, to April, and yes, board members did attend. Yeah, we do attend. And, um, I would love to see the next step, uh, when all this information is passed down to some of our teachers and staff. So it's very important, um, to work this together and to see multicultural relevance, um, just happening even during Covid.
Dr. Warner?
I, I just want to say how much I've appreciated the district leadership team meetings. I think it's been a very good opportunity to, to meet staff on a different level. I want to express my thanks, uh, to the staff who's put together the back-to-school plan. I know change is hard. I know that, um, this has been a challenging year, and I know next year is going to continue to be challenging. We are not done with Covid. It's unlikely that the United States will reach herd immunity. And there are new variants emerging every day, so we cannot predict what the future holds. We just have to plan as best we can to meet the needs of our students. And we have to remember that it is our students that are the most important aspect of our job. Thank you.
So I, I just wanted to share a little story that I heard yesterday, um, which was I was talking to, uh, an interesting family where there are, uh, six special needs children living together, um, in a, in a home. And, uh, an individual told me just how amazing a particular third grade teacher at Falmouth Elementary School was, and her name is, uh, Ms. Formica. And they said that this student started the year unable to read and that she can now read, and they are just so impressed. And so I just thought I'd share that story because we really do have amazing, um, teachers in Stafford County who have just been working like crazy to, to make sure a child learns how to read during the middle of a pandemic with special needs. So, um, shout out to all the teachers who are doing that, but especially, uh, Ms. Formica at Falmouth Elementary School. Thank you.
I would just like to thank all those who are working in the trenches. And the final words that I would just say tonight, because I want to be short as well, is you're going to make it. This has been a long haul. I have seen in the faces of families, of staff, of others, excitement, but also exhaustion. And so I do want to say to everybody, you will make it. Lean on your team, lean on each other. We will make it. It has been a tough year. I want people to be able to, um, renew. However, if your students do need the help, be there this summer. Reach out to the staff. They want to be there. If there are resources you need, we started with our special education and seeing some pretty staggering numbers. So if you do need help, please reach out to your schools. We may not be the final place to be, but we, there is, there are so many caring and wonderful people who want to make sure that our families in Stafford County are cared for. So please make sure you make that call. All right, let's see. Superintendent comments. Is that going to be Dr. Kizner this evening?
As long as I'm still superintendent, um, so I do want to, uh, quickly go over, um, some information that, um, was shared at the Virginia Department of Health and the Rappahannock Area Health Department meetings today. So I think you're all aware that, uh, the FDA approved, uh, through a CDC recommendation, uh, vac- vaccinations for, uh, 12 and older. It still has to go through, um, some, uh, procedures, so it's not official yet, but it, it will be official. I will tell you that, uh, Virginia Department of Health and our local health department is very much, uh, wants to partner with our schools, um, and try to offer clinics at the school site. The preference would be to try to get one of the two shots, uh, before the school year lets out. It would be a greater chance that students will, um, participate. Of course, we will need parent permission, but I guess what I'm sharing with you is that, um, we are working with the Rappahannock Area Health Department, um, and they're working with also private providers like pediatricians. They're looking at pharmacies, um, and others to help administer the shot, but, uh, very much would like to partner with schools and to see if we could offer clinics, um, either before or after school and maybe even during school. The logistics is a little challenging. As you know, we just have a few more weeks of school and plus we're in middle SOL testing, but we still think it's something that, uh, we should pursue. I will also tell you, um, as some of you have commented, um, there is no change in any plans, even when the governor makes his latest announcements, I guess around June 15th, we still have to do contact tracing. We still have to, um, quarantine those who have not, um, as Colette already indicated, those who have not, um, been vaccinated and, and the time period which they needed to be vaccinated. Uh, social distancing, uh, is still a factor. A lot of school systems are saying now, to the extent possible, masks, we're going to learn more about masks with the governor's orders, um, but we anticipate masks will still be part of the health mitigation strategies. I will say on a footnote, uh, Colette and Lisa Boatright are working on a, a revision of the policy that the school board adopted back in July related to masks, because it's, honestly, it's outdated, but, um, we'll, we'll bring that up at the end of May. So, uh, yeah, the May 25th meeting. Okay, so that's a little bit about the health department. I do want to thank the school board. Your conversations about mental health today and, and social emotional needs was very rewarding. Unfortunately, if you've been reading the VSBA briefing, uh, seems like everything is becoming polarized in this country and this state. You know, some, some people are suggesting that schools should stay away from counseling and social emotional. I think we all agree that would be wrong for children on many, many levels. Today, we recognized the counselor of the year. The three finalists were, um, Harry Mack, um, from Stafford High School, Teresa Conde from Monture Elementary School, and Ryan Braun from North Stafford High School. And the counselor of the year, uh, was Teresa from Monture, so I congratulate them. We had a little ceremony. Uh, she's been a school counselor for 15 years, um, in Stafford. We also recognize the AP, the Assistant Principal of the Year, and we had, uh, three finalists, Carly Hegner from Brookpoint High School, um, Amy, uh, Lennress from, uh, H Pool, and, um, Catherine Limzik from, um, Margaret Brent, and Amy from, uh, HH Pool was recognized as the Assistant Principal of the Year. So I want to make sure we congratulate them and we'll do, um, we'll put something on our website and pu- and publicly recognize them. I also want to mention, and we'll have much more detail for FAB and the school board, you know, this budget season has been, um, a, a challenge, but a challenge in a different way. Not as much of a challenge because we're concerned that we're going to be overspending. The, the challenge has really been an increased revenues. Um, some of it, you're fully aware of. The state gave us additional revenue that we initially did not expect. They helped school systems harmless with sales tax and enrollment. We budgeted, uh, $3 million that we, um, set aside just in case, um, we were running into, uh, challenges, and that never took place. Our hourly pay rate, our substitute pay rate, our, um, contracted salaries, our, we had fuel savings. So I, I guess what I'm sharing with you is that, um, Chris is still working the numbers. We obviously just finished, uh, the payroll, um, for May, so we have a much So we have a much better projection of what the year's going to look like. But I'm just saying that right now, we're anticipating, I'll just call it a healthy surplus. So I know the school board, understandably so, like administration, is always making sure that we're spending our money wisely and not doing anything to put us in a deficit. And I'm sharing with you that that will absolutely not happen this fiscal year. So that's just a quick summary. And I do want to thank the school board for the action we took last week, last school board meeting. I tried not to talk about my health publicly, but it meant very much to me. And I got a lot of positives from people recognizing that my medical care has to be at Virginia Commonwealth University Medical Center. And your sensitivity, and I think you guys did really well on the social-emotional chart. Your empathy and sympathy meant more to me than you could ever imagine. So I do want to thank you as your superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Kizner. With that, we are going to move on to our six consent items. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the six consent items.
Second? It's been moved in second. Did anyone want to delete or remove any? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All six items are approved. There are no action items on our list tonight. For information items, our first item is the approval of the proposed high school student fees for FY '22. I believe noting that there has not been any change. But Dr. Nichols, I don't know if you have anything you would like to add.
Ma'am, just to say that there are no changes for this year's fees and that we do have the statement that is printed with the fees. And we also put that on our school websites, informing parents that if there's hardships or struggles, that the schools will work with them and that these fees are not due all at once at the beginning. And this year, they were very limited, if at all. Collected for any questions.
All right, Ms. Yan?
You did make that comment. I was just going to ask. This is just a list to say this is our fees. But if, for some reason, even though they were enrolled, but they didn't do any of the, whatever it is, the activity because of COVID, then of course, there's nothing, even though they were enrolled, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Dr. Chase?
Yeah, I just was curious about the Edge Annuity Newer Repeat Course as set by Stafford County Public Schools' Summer School Rate. Do we not know what that is? Or is it left like that because it changes regularly? Or?
They are free, ma'am. They're free this year, yes.
Okay. So do we want to put free? I mean, is that on the website so that parents know that?
Yes, it's all part of the summer school program.
Great, thanks. Thanks.
Ms. Healy?
This paper transcripts printed in mail, $2. Does that not cost more for us to bill $2 than to collect $2?
That actually is a decrease in the last year. It used to be $4 for transcripts. Right now, the majority of transcripts, I can tell you, are sent electronically through Naviance. There's very few. That comes in with special requests.
Right, but I think we ought to look into that, whether it's going to cost us more than $2 to bill for $2. Just, you know, sometimes it's more economically feasible not to charge than to charge $2. I don't know how we're collecting it, but I'm assuming at the high school, somebody's got to be billing it. Somebody's got to be accounting for it. Somebody's got to make the deposit and credit it. And when you go through all that, I'd be surprised if it's, you know, cost-effective to charge that. And my other comment has to do with the JROTC. And I know this $100 is what we've charged ever since we started. And my understanding when this started was that was because the JROTC students got to keep certain of their uniforms. But I heard from one family that the only thing they kept were socks and one T-shirt. So I would like to look into this to see, you know, what in fact they're getting to keep for this $100. And if in fact, it's not worth $100, I would like to look at perhaps reducing this fee. Now, I understand in cases of hardship, people don't have to pay. But there's going to be a lot of cases where they may not meet, you know, what may be considered a hardship. But in today's times, $100 is quite a lot of money. And students are, you know, in some cases, working to pay this themselves. And other cases, maybe the family will help them out. But I would like to look into that because most of our classes, we don't charge for. And there are a number of classes we have. Say the dual enrollment. Basically, the charge for that is for the test. We're not charging extra for the textbooks or the other benefits that come with those classes. So I'd like to look at that JROTC fee to see if we can perhaps reduce that before this is finalized.
And we looked at that last year when you questioned the fee. And we went through every high school and compared what they were all getting. I can get that information for you again. A lot of that fee is also the dry cleaning for the dress uniforms. So we can provide that for you.
Because I know we charge $50 for dry cleaning the chorus and orchestra and concert and marching band. And I know that's been the same since my daughter graduated over, what, 10 years ago? So I'm not sure that the fees match the actual cost. But if I could get that, I'd appreciate it. And I would still like to look to see if, even if it's for a one-year only, we could look at reducing that fee for the JROTC students.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Hearing none. Thank you, Dr. Nichols. Next, we're going to talk about VRS and the Enhanced Health Coverage Health Insurance Credit for School Division retirees. Okay, I'm not going to read the whole thing. I will. Does anybody have any questions? I know that Ms. O'Brien is here. Thank you for staying tonight. Any questions? Well, thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Is there anything that we need to know that you want to bring to our attention? How about I give you that up since you've stayed with us? Okay, and on a personal note, I know you had a wonderful grandmother's Mother's Day.
Yes, thank you. Really, this is a wonderful enhancement for the people in our 555-89 group. And I hope that the board will support it because it just brings a little bit more of a benefit to that hard-working group of people.
Dr. Chase?
So I see that it's budgeted. So it's, this isn't something, I mean, we already set-
This is new. We already pay a percentage for the $1.50 credit. They're increasing it. But Chris felt confident that we could pick up these costs within the current budget without an issue.
Okay, so it wasn't actually budgeted then? Okay, that's what I'm confused about. So we budgeted $18,000. And so we're suggesting that we're going to increase that by $25,000? Something like that? Okay. So I would just say, maybe the way this has been prepared, since it says that that was budgeted and it actually wasn't budgeted, maybe needs to be reworked. But thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Clarifying, the increase is $18,000, correct? Okay, just trying to make sure that I read it correctly.
$18,000 is what we would have paid.
And it's $25,007.
Okay, sorry, I read it, the cost of the increase is $18,000. Okay, all right.
That's why she's going to fix it.
Okay.
Okay. So the amount that Mr. Farmer, that needed to be secured was $18,000. Is that correct? Okay. Okay.
This is just for retirees? And this just increases their benefit? It reduces their cost of their benefit premiums?
It increases their benefit when they retire.
Okay.
Just for, there's a health insurance reimbursement program directly from VRS, a health insurance credit program. So it increases that monthly amount that they can achieve.
Okay.
All right. Our next item is to approve a month-to-month extension of a contract with Rico regarding copiers. Any questions? Dr. Warner?
I was wondering if this costs us more for this month-to-month program instead of having an annual fee?
So actually, it's probably costing us a little bit less right now because we're able to go on a month-to-month. And it gives us flexibility. One of the things we're looking at is actually piloting because we currently, these are the copiers we have now. We've had Rico for several years. And so we can go out and do an RFP, but we felt, hey, let's do a month-to-month for right now. And then we can bring in some different copiers from some other manufacturers and get a better feel for, do we want to take those and implement them across all of our schools next school year? Which ones best suit our needs?
It's just counterintuitive. In most cases, you get a better discount if you're not doing month-to-month. But if, I mean, I realize our needs have changed.
Yeah, and part of that is because we're keeping the same copiers we have now, which is why it's a cheaper rate. But we're month-to-month, so if we have problems, we can switch them out.
Thank you.
So is this actually budgeted?
This is 100% budgeted.
I'm just making sure. Because we got into a little trouble a few years back when things that were supposed to have, things were not actually budgeted. So thank you.
All right. Our next one is the approval of multiple construction contracts. I hope that the board has looked at. There are a variety of projects here that some are related to, tied to a VPSA bond fund in the future. Some looking at operating funds and some with potentially year-end funds. So these are, usually, we bring these in June. So we're sort of starting it early so that we can begin to look at these projects. If, due to the late hour, we want to bring this back, we can. Because I know some of that timing has to come over June. But Mr. Anderson, since you are in front of us, do you have anything you would particularly like to highlight or comment on?
Would you like me to walk through these quickly? No? I'm seeing some notes.
Yeah.
Which one?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions.
Sure. So there's a design contract being proposed for North Stafford High School and Ferry Farm Elementary School. And I gather that there's money in the bond to pay for it, but we're suggesting that we will pay for it out of these funds in advance. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. That's just getting a jump on the funding that'll come in November. So we'll be able to spend that bond money more quickly.
Okay, and how much is this for the design cost? Because it wasn't, I didn't see it listed.
Yeah, so we have pricing now. The North Stafford High School contract's going to be around $270,000. $270. And then the Ferry Farm mechanical contract is going to be around $120,000. And there'll be a smaller architectural component for that. It won't need board approval because it'll be under $100,000.
Okay, so I just, I'm a little concerned. I saw that there's $172,000 for assessments of schools and their needs. And there's one school that I don't see in there that I'm particularly interested in, which is Drew Middle School. And I'm particularly interested in Drew Middle School given that the renovation has been pushed from what we asked for, which was 2026, to 2032. And so are you telling me this school doesn't need anything? Or are we just?
No, ma'am. That assessment was done in 2017. So it's one of our more recent assessments.
Okay, and so are you telling me that there's nothing that we need to do at Drew Middle School between now and 2032?
I'm not saying that, no. So Drew Middle School, we have, we're looking at other options for that, as has been discussed with the school board. So we are trying to come up with some plans where we can have some improvements done sooner than the major renovation. And there are other smaller projects that we're working on with Drew as well.
Okay. So when will the board see anything about that? I'm concerned because I watched what happened with Ferry Farm, where nothing was done and not because it was going to get this renovation or it was going to get a rebuild, and then we just kicked it down. I guess one thing I would be interested in seeing when this comes back is just like, over the past five years, how much money has been spent at each school? Because I feel like I approve things at North Stafford High School multiple times a year, and I've seen nothing approved for Drew Middle School in the four years that I've been here, that I recall. And so I may be wrong about that. But I would just like to see, how much have we spent in renovation at 32 different sites in the last five years? But that's just me asking for that information.
And I think we had that on the three-hour list. Or, no, that probably wasn't this year. You're right. Because we've had it presented in that format in the past.
I have a question.
Sure. Oh, are you finished?
Yeah, Captain. Yes, she is. So Drew Middle School. Last I remember, I thought we were, because we need a middle school. We need a larger middle school. And if I remember correctly, I talked about, I thought they mentioned that there was not enough land there or something to rebuild a bigger elementary school. But I know that we need one. And instead of putting so much money in Drew Middle School, I think we need to look at a place to put a larger middle school to accommodate more students in that area and in the north, because we do need one. We only have two up here. We have HH Pool, we had Rodney. We have Shirley on the other side.
You have AG Wright?
AG Wright.
No, I'm just talking about in that area right there. So we have-
AG Wright.
Yeah, I know, but that's way over there. But I'm talking about in this corridor right here, 95, that it would be a good idea to put that on the map to figure out if we need one instead of just rebuilding. Because otherwise, when we're talking about what happened with Ferry Farm, and we try to do that with Drew, and there's not enough space to accommodate, because that school is how old?
A lot older than 20, a lot older than 1981, which is North Stafford High School.
Oh, she's on North Stafford. I'm trying to look with you here, right?
No, I know. But my concern is that if we're waiting, if we think the solution is going to be a brand-new middle school, I will tell you that the SES at Drew Middle School is very low, one of the lowest middle schools in the county. And it's just a travesty to have that school in that condition with the plan that in eight years, we'll get a new middle school, and that's going to solve this problem. So, yeah.
Yeah, well, we don't have a new school at North Stafford. We're just fixing also, so.
One of the things, kind of to piggyback off of like what Sarah was saying, is when I toured Drew, was like even going into one of their science classrooms, it is so piecemeal. They don't even have a working, a sink and counter cabinet for proper washing of hands in that room. You know, just something as simple as organizing cabinets and, you know, ordering cabinets and putting in cabinets that are functional for the use of the room and for the teachers teaching in that room. You know, there's just, some things are quite simple that could be done, but would mean a lot to the educators there. So just to think about that.
Ms. Healy, I knew you were next. I was getting there.
Oh, okay. When the Fab looked at that, I don't know if you want to call it proposed CIP or the county suggested CIP, I did suggest that we bring this to the board, the Drew issue, because to me, it's not acceptable to hold off that long. I mean, we all know there's a lot of need. And with respect to the capacity, we had talked about the presence of the day school at Drew, because the day school basically takes up the lower level, does it not? So if-
So, if the day school were to be relocated, then that would give us a lot more capacity. Now, we would have to do renovations for that. But I think it's something that, that we as a board need to talk about, because we, we have identified a need for a middle school, and we know that's going to be, you know, a significantly higher cost. But while we have Drew, and there is, you know, there is some useful life left, as I understand it, but it needs to be improved and enhanced. It may be incumbent on us to look at, you know, what exactly we need to do to bring it up to par with, with the other, in middle schools that we have. So, I, I think this board needs to address that. And if we determine that, you know, we do want to move forward with the renovations at Drew, then we need to look at our priorities and, and have, I assume either our, our three-on-three, discuss it with the supervisors, or, or just, you know, bring it to the supervisors for a, a general discussion. Because when I saw that, I knew that is, that's just not acceptable, to, to put something off that we've needed for years for another, almost 10 years.
Yes, and we'll give Drew more thought, and also, we'll be speaking about that with you as we're updating the CIP, as we do every year.
So, while, while, while you're looking at Drew, are there any others that we should be looking at that are in that condition?
Your, well, this is not something that's on the, as an information, I'm right now, but I'll be glad to come back and speak with you more about that. And yes, there's numerous improvements that need to be made in, in various schools.
And I think this came.
We have Hartwood that we'll be working on with.
I think this came up at the three-on-three also, where we're doing like here and there, and I've asked for, like, let's put it all together. Let's get a list and see what all, in addition to Drew, what are the other ones, and prioritize those, instead of just looking at.
Yes, ma'am, and these, on this agenda item, this information item are mostly based off the three-R list, which is a much smaller list of projects.
In respect to the three-R list, do you feel like you're going to have everything you need to complete? What is essentially considered the goal for the end, this end of year? Do we feel like we're getting enough of that list done? And looking at the list of things that you have on here, are we sure that we are going to complete, have time to complete this? Short in summer, long list?
Yes, the first, the first round of projects that you already approved, like the mechanical projects that were approved at the last school board meeting, those were so we could get equipment deliveries and actually hit that window. Some of the projects on this list won't be done. For example, the chiller rebuild will be done during the cool weather months. So, they don't have to necessarily happen over the summer. But we're definitely hitting that window with the projects that do need to be done over the summer.
Madam Chair, can I ask one more? Since summer school is going to be done at North Stafford, are they all good to go with reliable AC for the students that will be participating?
That is one of the projects, where we're changing air handling units. And then we have another phase where we're actually designing. In this information item, we're designing additional mechanical improvements, and that's also just to get ahead of the game, so that when the bond funding comes, we're going to be able to hit those windows. That's a major part of what we focus on, is the amount of time we have to actually do the installations. So, yes, to answer your question with North Stafford High School, that was one of them that was approved at a previous board meeting, and the equipment's already ordered, the notice to proceed's been issued. So, we're gearing up to do that project in this short window that we have.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to do the unpopular one. I am not saying that these are not needed, but to spend $136,390 to look into what we could do, how we would put in synthetic fields at North Stafford and Colonial Forge High School, seems like when we have no funding source for those two fields. In the past, we have used proffer money, which, well, for the first one at Stafford High School, we actually used park-and-reck proffers, which was the way to do it, in my opinion, because it does not take away. I am, I, I think I just would like to be sure that this is the priority item when we have other things, potentially issues at Drew that could be used, other, other areas. That doesn't mean that I do not want, as we go forward, synthetic fields, but at this point, I don't see $2 million in our budget to be able to fund those, that this might be one on here that I would say we may have some projects, Drew or other areas, that we might want to use those funds, or even look into options with Drew. So, I'm just putting that one out there for, for now. I'm not saying, you know, we aren't voting on these tonight, but just my concern.
Sure. I can speak to that just a little bit, so you'll have a little more information to think about. I spoke with both principals today, and they're both concerned about the lack of turf field. It's, it's very unusual for a high school, especially in this part of Virginia, to not have the turf field. The practice has become more complicated, and there's numerous logistical challenges. There's rental costs, other costs. The time involved with maintaining the field, and even just the student time from having to go to other facilities to practice. There's a lot of issues with that. As I've spoken with the principals at the schools when I visit, this is one that's come up for North Stafford High School and for Colonial Forge High School as really an equity issue, trying to get this done for the school. So, I'm, I'm just speaking to try to represent them, because I'd really at least like to get the design done. This is for the design only, so we can plan farther ahead for the funding in a future year.
And I, and I understand that. I've been on here too long with these fields and understand how they've been funded in the past. It will be up to a future board of whether you want to put that $2 million out of your costs. So, I just am throwing it out there in terms of, I see lots of needs out there to plan for something that we don't have a funding source right now, and it has not been in our three-R list, I don't believe. Now, I'd have to relook of whether we have the 800 to maybe now $1 million. When we did it at Mountain View, it was $850,000, I believe, was the proffer. And that was a whole mess, anyway, because of the board of supervisors not wanting to pay us for it. But we got that resolved before. But I understand the need for the study. I am just making sure that that is a priority item on a summer, when I hear things about Drew, where it has been probably two or three years since I've been in there, so I would have to defer to others. I just, just highlight that one at this point, not saying that it is not a need. We have lots of needs, and I understand their need for it. I understand.
Understood, and, and it's on the three-R list as an unfunded project, and on 2026.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
So, equity, right? I understand that at this point in time, you're saying, you know, Drew needs. Can $136,000 help Drew out? Like, what can we pay for $136,000? But it says right here, North Stafford and Colonial Forge High Schools are the only two remaining high schools without a synthetic turf field. So, now suddenly, suddenly, we have to wait. Regardless of how many projects we have, this is a different. Mountain View, Mountain View has turf field?
They were negotiated as part of.
Mountain View didn't ask for a turf field.
They did not ask for it, that is true.
But Mountain View received a turf field.
Yeah.
And we appreciate it, but it was not asked for.
Okay, but some, the kids don't look at it that way, though. When they go play at another school, and they have turf field and they don't. So, it's about equity. That's what I'm looking at right now.
There are additional, I'm sorry, there are additional costs with using, not having a turf field. The maintenance, the upkeep, the logistics of moving students to different practice fields. All those things end up costing us in a different way. They come out of a different pot of money, but ultimately, they end up costing us.
Right, yeah, and the scheduling issues. And you could even say there's some safety issues when they're having to have a game on a wet field. They have to call whether to cancel the, the game or not. So, there's, there's numerous issues. I totally agree, there's quite a few priorities. And again, this is just a design, so we can better plan for that in the future. I'm more, I guess, optimistic that the money will be there to do all these things with the schools. And, I mean, I just, it's an obvious thing to me.
I can't even get the high school moving, and we desperately need that.
Well, I, I can understand the design aspect, because then at least we know what we're looking at long-term. But, you know, I, I, I think, as Ms. Young said, this is an equity issue, and for many of our students that are, are participating in sports, it would be nice to have this, get the design done. We may never be able to pay for it, to get the, the built, but it's possible that we can come up with alternative funding, or somebody can, somebody will magically, you know, bequeath it to the school.
So, so I would just respectfully like to ask people who want to bring up equity to go walk around Rodney Thompson Middle School, or Hay Gail Middle School, or Dixon Smith Middle School, and then go take a walk around Drew Middle School. And then you can talk to me about equity. All right, sorry I opened that one, but that was, I just, oh, Ms. Healy, I'm sorry.
Madam Chairman, I, I think there's a lot of discussion that can be had on these issues, but I certainly support Drew. I've supported Drew for over a decade. Not much has happened there, and that needs to be a priority. But with respect to this study, I like the idea that it's on here. And if we have this study, and then if something were to occur that we had the opportunity to, you know, have these funds, we'd be ready to go. And that's why I'm going to be supporting this study. As I mentioned, with respect to Mountain View, Mountain View did not request a turf field. A turf field was given to Mountain View. We actually tore up a beautiful field, you know, to put in the, to put in the turf field. But since it's been there, you know, it has been an asset to the, the sports and, and a benefit to the students. So, I would very much like to see those fields at North and Forge. I can't imagine that when we build the next high school, it's not going to have a turf field. So, I would, I would suggest that, that question about future funding be something that is discussed with the, the FAB can discuss it, but the real discussion's going to have to be with the, with the board of supervisors, because they're the ones that came up with this source of the funding for, what was it? Brook Point and?
All three.
And Mountain View.
And Stafford.
Well, well, but Stafford came when, when we rebuilt the school. So, this board needs to prioritize, though, with Drew, particularly with that, putting it off. And I, I think we need to have that discussion, and it may even need a work session, because discussing these things at meetings, you know, when it's past some of our bedtime, is, is not as productive as, as having an, an opportunity to sit down and, and, and look at, you know, what, what the needs are, and, you know, what, what we can do about it. So, and Mr. Anderson, thank you. I, I really am so grateful that you came to our school system. We should be thanking your wife, because I understand she, she picked the Fredericksburg, you know, area, but, but you, you've, you've been a blessing to the school system, so.
All right, thank you so much, and I'm excited about all of these projects. We're definitely going to look more closely at Drew. So, my, my whole theme here is more for the schools, and definitely try to get these high priority issues taken care of.
Yeah, go ahead and dust off 2017 design project that we had, because they had some good stuff in there, so you might want to take a look at that.
Sure.
And get it enhanced.
I, I certainly have, will always prioritize Drew over turf fields. However, I can't even go to the board of supervisors and ask for money until I know how much we need. So, I support at least getting that information.
All right. Excuse me? The last item is discussion regarding policy 1403. Dr. Chase and Ms. Young, I will see who wants to take the lead.
I will defer. Yeah, so we had this item, and then we sort of didn't come back, and so I was just wanting to discuss this. I am concerned about crowding at several of our elementary schools and middle schools and the superintendent's ability to alleviate that. I wanted to potentially, I wanted to propose that, that we consider passing this, but maybe keep it at 5% for the high schools, but 10% for the elementary and the middle schools in order to take care of the fact that we have so much growth happening right now, and that it makes it very hard to.
Make decisions.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I have to agree with Dr. Chase. I also think it gives us more flexibility in the short term, and since the attendance at the middle school and the elementary schools are pretty comparable. But I do agree with the 5% at the high school level. This is, these policies are revisited about every five years. I think this, if we were to change it now, this would not be a permanent change. This would just be something that it gives us enough flexibility as we are dealing with growth and attendance problems in a number of our school systems. And it gives the superintendent more discretion in addressing them in an efficient and, and manner that, that keeps politics out of it as well.
Yeah. I, originally, I didn't mind a 10%, but, you know, I will go along with, you know, 5 and 10 because, you know, the growth. And I know for myself, looking at some of my elementary schools, I mean, I go to all elementary schools, but definitely, you know, Winding Creek, you know, we share that, it's in my district, but Park Ridge is busting at the seams. And I know there are proffers out there for a new school on, off of Mine Road, so I would like to know what, what we could do about that. I mean, that's an elementary school that needed to be built. But for now, I at least have our superintendent be able to move kids around as needed, 10% where he needs it, when he needs it, versus having to come to us and, and, and take care of that. So, I appreciate if perhaps we could just go ahead and vote for this. I'm not sure if it's, it's on information, because we had it on here as information before. So, I'm not sure.
Is there a proposal, then, to rewrite the policy? So, you've brought a 5% and 10%. So, that would be, I guess we can bring that as an information item, because we need to have the text in there. Ms. Randall, I think I heard you say.
Yeah. So, I have two questions. What's the size of our largest middle school? Like, capacity-wise, what's the size?
I think that's, is that H.H. School, or is that yours?
1,100?
Designed for.
Designed for, okay. Okay, so 1,100. All right, and, and so, is part of the, the right of the superintendent to, I guess if a school is overcrowded or whatever, and, is to reassign them to another school? And then also, what about trailers? Is that authorizing for more trailers to be put on property, or how does trailers work? Learning cottages, whatever they like to be called?
Right.
Because aren't we looking at two schools doing that to them? And I'm just curious.
So, we, once you start putting trailers, that means we don't need any new schools?
A little concerned about that.
Is that what you want?
It's not what I want.
Okay, so you start putting trailers.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking. We have two elementary schools we're looking at. I want to know what's being done.
And you could just put trailers everywhere. We need a new school for, an elementary school in Embry Mill over there, that, that we have land and we have proffers. We don't need trailers.
So, I'm just going to answer the question, which was, this policy has nothing to do with trailers. It's not going to limit or, or promote putting trailers at any location. That would be a separate action that would have to be taken.
Mr. White, did you have a comment? I wasn't sure you were creeping forward, so I wasn't sure if there was a. No. Ms. Healy, do you have a, I, I do too, but.
Yes, when this came up before, what I, I asked that we would set a work session so we could discuss this in a more informal setting, preferably earlier in the evening than 10:10, because I have very strong feelings on this, and I may be, very well may be the minority in this. But having lived and survived a number of redistrictings, I know how emotional it is, and what a incredible impact it has on a family. And I feel strongly that to double the number of students that the superintendent, and this is not a reflection on Dr. Kizner. this is not a reflection on Dr. Kizner, but it's any superintendent has the authority to unilaterally relocate, which in the case of an elementary school, would be almost 100 students. In the case of a middle school, would be possibly 110, maybe more if it was overcrowded. You know, to say, you can move twice as many students as you want without going through any process at all, to me is, it's not fair to the community. I mean, we're talking about potentially moving, you know, whole subdivisions of students without the families having any say. And our process right now for redistricting provides for public hearings and public input, and the opportunity to hear from the community. And I'm not willing to take that benefit away from the community to at least have a say. Now, 5%, that was determined that that could be on a case-by-case basis, if it was an emergency. And that's been exercised, and it's been exercised, you know, with good reason, and it worked. But there's a 100% difference between 5% and 10%. And I just, I can't imagine that I could support it. Maybe some or all of you could convince me of that in a work session. But just to sit here, you know, this late in the evening and say, well, you know, let's double it here and double it here, but leave it where it is in the high schools, is to me, you know, not really doing our job.
And Ms. Healy, I brought it back just because it sort of disappeared, and I hadn't seen any scheduled work session for it or anything. So I know that we have several schools that are very crowded right now, and I'm very concerned about how we're going to take care of that come August 9th, which is not that far away. And so I am not opposed to a work session, but I do think we do, we need to address it. And so since it sort of wasn't on the agenda two weeks ago, I didn't, and I hadn't heard about anybody trying to schedule a work session, I just wanted to bring it back. But I agree, at 10:13, it's not the time to start the conversation, other than to just, to bring it back to all of our memories.
Looking at our schedule, we can do a work session, if you would like, next Tuesday after our closed session. Other than that, at least the next three meetings have our advisory committees, oh, next two, okay. But I know our last meeting usually in June, Mr. Fulmer usually spends most of our time with us in, potentially in work session, if the projects that we just discussed were going to be on there. So if there is a thought, the most convenient one would probably be next Tuesday.
Can I suggest that we have the work session, but that we don't have a work session just for this, this 5-10%, but that we also have that same work session and address Drew?
I think that's going to be tough for staff to be ready for next Tuesday. Or, I mean, I don't want to promise something. Let me talk to.
The fact that we have that 2017 study, at least to start conversation.
I would say that what we might include in it is a discussion of just enrollment in general across all the schools where we potentially are going to have issues next. And how are we planning to deal with those issues?
Let's do that. And then if there is any particular information, we can have Drew, but I don't, I want to.
Just the 2017, just to dust it off and bring it, so we could start having a conversation about it. Because I know, I remember what was in the study, but it would be nice for our new board members to know what is in the study. And if you could even send it ahead of time, that they could familiarize themselves with what it is that we worked on before, because we did have, it was a good study.
So let's plan to have it immediately following the closed session on next Tuesday. We'll start at 6:00 for the closed session, and then after that, we'll move into the work session. Ms. Hall, I can work with you, and Dr. Jones, and Dr. Kizner, and Ms. Randall, we can get the parameters of that, but I think we've got it down. All right. Other than that, our next regularly scheduled board meeting will be on May 25. Again, that one will start at 6:00 with the presentations, and then next Tuesday, we will see you next Tuesday.
I will provide for the next Tuesday and on the other.
You think that's the only thing that gets me to.
Right, we are adjourned.
Huh?